We can't physically.
Good evening and welcome to the West Hartford Public Schools Regular Board of Education Meeting. It is Tuesday, May the 20th, 2025. Charlotte, may you please call the roll. Mr. Gagnon?
Here.
Mr. Goldman?
Here.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Meramon?
Here.
Mrs. Nazarela?
Present.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson?
Here.
Mrs. Jagaloff?
Present.
Student Representative Sarah Granquist?
Here.
Student Representative Alexis Nguyen?
Here. Thank you. And Sarah, may you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have a revision to the agenda order. Now it is time for public communications. This is where we have an opportunity to hear from you, your questions, your thoughts, your suggestions, and your concerns. Each individual is allowed three minutes to speak. We ask when you please go to the podium to please share your name and your town of residence. Please also be mindful of Charlotte, who will hold up a yellow card when you have one minute remaining in your time. And when your time is expired, you will see a red card. We ask will you please to conclude your sentence and respectfully take your seat. Be mindful that we are attentively listening to comments that are being made. However, it is policy that we do not respond to comments as they are being made. And with that, we will start with the list that we have here. We're receiving comments on any item. However, for our purpose for this evening, tonight's agenda includes annual inspection and evaluation for indoor air quality, Hall High School decennial accreditation visit, I'll have others to specify the actual full name of that, Equity University Council, a year in review, financial report, and approval of minutes from the May 6th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. I'm going to start with those who have signed up speaking on an agenda item. And we first have Jonathan. All right. Pardon my chuckle. I'm glad you were ready. All right.
Okay. Thank you for the introduction. My name is Jonathan Raome. I'll bet you couldn't read that. French-Canadian last name. I'm a resident of West Hartford. I have a son who goes to Cedric Middle School. And I am passionate about education, so much so that I have a PhD, but please don't call me doctor. But because I'm passionate, I wanted to bring to your attention some of the things that I've noticed over the years. In fact, a couple of things that I'm hoping you'll consider changing. My son's first introduction ever to video games was, as a matter of fact, in Charter Oak Elementary School, where he had a math website where he had to do his homework. And he could get some video game time as a reward. And so I wasn't terribly excited about that because I wanted to minimize my son's access to screens and digital technology. And unfortunately, he's taken this video game and school concept with him to Cedric Middle School. And what he does there is there are a couple of classes that when he finishes his work, he gets his Chromebook out and he plays video games in the back of the class. I asked him if he's allowed to do that and he said, well, the teacher really can't keep up with them. And he can always circumvent whatever controls they put in place. So I'm hoping that this board will take seriously the fact that my son is rushing through his schoolwork in order to play video games in class. He's also developed a habit of binge watching YouTube, which he does in the back of some classes, unfortunately, if he's not playing video games. That's something I've been able to clamp down at home. He actually was thankful when I did it. And I think that if you do it at school, I hope that people will be more focused. Now, what I'm really concerned about is that if he goes to high school, my understanding, and it's an imperfect understanding, is that kids are allowed to carry their phones around in high school. Well, I'm really concerned about unfettered access to the internet. I'm extremely concerned. I've seen the reports. I've seen mental health declines. I've seen suicide rates up. I've seen reports of social media bullying. I don't think people should be carrying, I don't think adolescents should be carrying phones around in the high school. And I'm hoping that you will consider a policy for next fall and thereafter where kids don't carry phones around. I think that overall, the academic environment will be much improved. That said, I think that there's a lot of information about digital media, about the effects of screens, about the effects of cell phones, and their effects on mental health that need to be communicated. I have the impression that other parents would like to know. I have the impression that the teachers would like to know, administrators, faculty. And I don't think there's any one solution. I think we need a multi-pronged effort, maybe by providing information through pamphlets or handouts around school websites, or by revising the student handbooks, or maybe having showings of screenagers, or maybe having speakers. So it looks like my time is up. I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Esther Gonzalez. And I will say, if I mess up anyone's name, please charge it to my head and not my heart.
Hi. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak up, first of all. As Jonathan mentioned, I and my husband, he wrote this for me, support a policy that limits students' access to the internet in a school to only websites they need to complete school assignments. We can do this at home, and there is no reason this cannot be done in schools. We also support a policy of no phones bell-to-bell townwide. Kids' focus in a school should be on schoolwork and face-to-face interactions with their teachers and peers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rebecca W.
Thank you. My name's Rebecca Warchut. I am a West Hartford resident. I am a mother of a fourth grader at Braburn, a sixth grader at Sedgwick, and I teach sixth grade in Simsbury. All of that said, there are three things that you can do to help dramatically improve the focus and the mental health and the social well-being of our students. The first step is a bell-to-bell no-phone policy, K-12. Sedgwick implemented it this year and have seen really positive results. Similarly, Simsbury's middle school did it recently. And like the administrators are not spending their time dealing with phone stuff in the middle of the day. The kids are not leaving class to go check their phones in the same way. And it's going to make teachers' lives easier and administrators' lives easier, and who doesn't want to do that? The second thing in addition to that is having some way for teachers to monitor what students are doing online. Securely, GoGuardian or Examples, there are other programs, I'm sure. This has academic benefit. As a teacher, I can see all of my students' computers at the same time. I can say, oh, the student is struggling quietly with an assignment and hasn't gotten started yet. Let me check in with them. Or the student hasn't found a credible source. Or this student's doing an excellent job. Maybe I can pull it up as a model. And so it's actually a really quick litmus test for me, like how the class is doing. Similarly, I can close out a tab, send a note to a kid who is on a game that they're not supposed to be on, have a history of where they've been. Because even with the bell-to-bell no phones, students are using these devices to access other things, as Jonathan said, workarounds. The last thing is, we need to do it next year. The research is there. The data is there. Connecticut said we need a policy. Why wait for an entire year? New York State is moving this direction. Torrington's got a strong one. We can come out as a leader on this, and it will have an immediate dramatic effect on our kids' mental health. So, thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Jamie Burns.
Hi. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Jamie Burns. I am a West Hartford resident. I'm a mom of a fifth grader at Braburn and a seventh grader at Sedgwick. I am also a clinical psychologist. And so I'm hoping to talk to you tonight about something that actually is meaningful, both when we're talking about phones and going bell-to-bell, and also talking about the restrictions with the computers and trying to have a program in place to sort of try to restrict our students' access to, as Jonathan said, being able to get onto YouTube or rushing through work. Being a clinical psychologist, I always think it's important to listen to what people's stories are, but also to back it up with research. So I do have a research article I brought for you tonight that comes out of the University of California Irvine, where they have proven that when people are distracted, it takes approximately 23 minutes to bring your focus back. And that is really for all of us. That's not just for our adolescents. So anytime we're looking at a phone and we might just look for 10 seconds just to see, did I get a text? Did I get a new email? Or I'm just quickly reading through something, it will take me 23 minutes to get back on task. That is also the case should a student be sitting next to somebody who is distracted and looking at something, and the student looks over and sees that somebody is on a game or on YouTube. That student is equally going to be distracted, and it's going to take an average of 23 minutes to get back on track. Why this is very important when we're thinking about restricting cellphone usage in the classroom is that if our students don't have access during their classroom, but in the time that they're walking to their next class, they are looking at their device, we are now impacting their next class and their ability to focus in that class, even if they don't have their device in front of them. Similarly, if a student is on a computer playing a game at the end of one class, we are now going to be impacting their ability to focus in their next class. So really, this is important for both pieces, to really be thinking about the fact that we are we are having to be aware of the fact that anytime we are distracted, it will take a long time for us to refocus, whether that distraction is a phone or a computer. So I'm going to leave this here if anybody is wanting some research to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all who we have who have signed up on the list here. However, certainly we'll extend anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? So let me go to those who haven't spoken yet and then, yes, please come to the podium and share your name and town of residence, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maria LaRusso. I'm a resident of West Hartford. I have a daughter freshman at Conard and a seventh grader at Cedric. So I'm also a professor at the University of Connecticut. And I guess I come at this from a lot of different angles because I do research with kids in K to 12. But I also see where they come out at the other end because they're my students after they leave you. And I have a lot of West Hartford students at UHAN, as I'm sure you can imagine. And what I'm increasingly seeing as a professor is that we're very aware of the mental health crisis. But I'm seeing social deficits. I'm seeing communication deficits. I'm seeing kids who are spending so much time on screens that they've not gone through the same experiences, the same developmental, the same kinds of interactions face-to-face, eye contact, that used to mark their days when kids were younger, that most of their day was highly interpersonal. And the screens are like a wall. I had probably like my worst experience last spring, that it really was like peaking how bad it had become, that I just couldn't, I couldn't get the students to let go of the devices. And I now have a policy in my own classes, this starting this year. We have no technology whatsoever. And some of the students say, I can't write notes by hand because I haven't done it in so long. I don't, I don't think that way anymore. I can't, my hand is tired. But what I want to say is I agree with what everybody else has said about the importance of not having the phones, even if it's just between classes because of the distraction. But I would also like to suggest if it would be possible to do some revisiting of curriculum because the amount of time spent on screens in the classroom, I think, is excessive. I think is a big part of kids' screen time. I think it is a big piece that's getting in the way of their education. My own kids, I think, especially my seventh grader at Cedric, I would say, I would say 80 to 90% of her screen time is Cedric-based. It's because she's on it all day at Cedric, and then she comes home and does it at home. And I just think there's other ways to practice math. It doesn't have to be IXL. It doesn't have to like, she comes home and she wants off the screen. She wants to go out and be outside in the sun and play. And, or if she's going to do homework, something that is active and that she's creating, that she's engaging, but she's not wanting to be looking at a screen. She's already done it all day. And I just think that while technology is a great tool, we need to rein it in.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not spoken yet who would like to make a public comment? Okay, sir? Oh, was there a hand raised behind there? I couldn't see. No? Okay, all right.
So last time I didn't get to this one final point, which is that I think that when teachers have to become the phone police, it diminishes the relationship with students. And it degrades the educational environment. And that relationship between a student and a teacher is very important. And it goes both ways. And the students are there to learn. But I met a guy this weekend who was a former computer science high school teacher, and he left the profession. He said a lot of it was because he turned into a phone cop, and he didn't get along with the students, and the students were always angry with him. And it just made for a very challenging environment in the classroom. So please keep that in mind in your deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will pause on public communication. I'll just do one last call. All right. We're going to pause on public communications and now move on to non-staff communications and reports. This is where we're able to hear from our student representatives, what is going on in their respective schools. So let us begin with Alexis, please, sharing about Conard.
Hi, everyone. With the school year wrapping up soon, there are many different events going on at Conard right now. For starters, this past weekend, our theater department went down to New Haven to attend the Sonheim Awards. Conard walked away with the Achievement by a Student Orchestra Award, as well as the Best Music Direction Award for Sam Urick. Congratulations to everyone involved. Additionally, we had some students attend the poetry recitation contest. Aubrey Corn, Taya Kieranova, Fang Yan Li, and Tudo, who won bronze, competed for Chinese. Hannah Dayjak, who won silver, competed for Spanish. And Jennifer Schlichting and Brian Swanson competed for Latin. This past weekend, there were also some amazing performances from our select music groups to commemorate the end of the school year. Good job to everyone who performed. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May 21st, is our annual spring concert. At 7:00 PM, there will be wonderful performances from the Conard orchestras, bands, and choirs to show families everything that has been worked on over this last semester. Our athletics department has been having a very strong spring. The girls' basketball team won the Central CT Board Six Basketball Official Sportsmanship Award. Seniors Tyler Walsh and Nate Blooms from the football team were awarded with the Scholar-A athletes award from the Doc Boys and No Northern CT Chapter of the National Football Foundation. The boys' track and field team was named inaugural champion of the Lindy Remigino Hartford Invitational. The boys' volleyball team is currently undefeated and is looking for a great run in the postseason. And lastly, with the end of the season, we have some exciting senior nights and Conard Hall games coming up. We are so proud of everyone's accomplishments and look forward to seeing, look forward to more success to finish off the great year. The Conard art show is currently taking place right now in the cafeteria, and lots of amazing art is present. It will stay up through May 22nd, and the reception of the awards ceremony will be tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Lastly, with senior prom this Friday and junior prom next Friday, we hope students will stay safe and have a great time.
Thank you, Alexis. Sarah, please share what's going on at Hall.
We are wrapping up the last few weeks of school at Hall with lots of celebrations and performances by our students. This past Saturday was junior prom, or senior prom, which was held at the Basketball Hall of Fame, and was followed the next day by the Spring Select Orchestra Music Showcase. IG Mani Salisti and the West Hartford Camerata put on an amazing performance at St. James Church in the Center. Yesterday was also the Choir and Jazz Spring Concert, and the orchestra and band will perform this Thursday at 7:00 PM in the Hall Auditorium. Next weekend, the Hall Band will perform in the Memorial Day Parade as a marching band. Two Hall musicians, Mindy Zhao and Chloe Madrick, were recently selected to be a part of the National Youth Orchestra and Jazz Ensembles. These groups are composed of the best high school musicians in the country and perform at Carnegie Hall in July before touring internationally this year to East Asia. This is an incredible achievement for these two musicians and a reflection of the incredible arts program we have in West Hartford. Today, March the 1st day of Hall's art show, students who are taking fine arts classes have their work displayed in one of our gymnasiums, and students and staff can visit the show during the school day. Tomorrow, Hall is hosting its annual awards night ceremony to honor students who have demonstrated citizenship, leadership, and achievement in various subject areas. We have also begun to host senior night events for Boys Lacrosse, Track and Field, Softball, Boys Tennis and Volleyball, and Girls Lacrosse, with the rest of our sports teams having their senior nights over the next week. Yesterday, our baseball team beat Conard 9 to 1 in the Mayor's Cup game, which is very exciting. The baseball team also honored Abby Zetune and supported the AZ Family Foundation with Love Abby shirts during their game with Simsbury last Monday. Our spring sports teams will be moving into their league and state tournaments next week, and we wish all of our athletes the best of luck as they represent us. We also have a number of celebrations coming up for many of our seniors. Last Wednesday, West Hartford Public Schools hosted a celebration at the Town Hall for seniors who will be entering into a skilled trade after high school. And this is the first year that West Hartford has held a Career Pathway Signing Day. On May 27th, we will honor our seniors that will be joining the military. And on May 29th, both Hall and Conard will honor the seniors who participated in the Future Educators of Diversity Club through a penning ceremony. We want to congratulate all of our students for their achievements, wish our seniors luck with their future plans, and remind everyone to finish out the year strong.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Alexis. Thank you both. I'm going to ask a question. I apologize. I did not give you a heads up on this question. And if you choose not to answer, that is completely well within your right. Do you care to share what your plans are once you graduate from high school?
Sarah and I will actually be spending the next four years together. We're both going to UConn.
All right. Congratulations to you both. Yes, yes, please, Latoya.
Yes, my question is a little different, but congratulations, Queens.
But congratulations, Queens, and glad we're going to still have you in CT. We need you. I wanted to just put something out there to y'all. You're both two just powerful young women. And there's a reason why you're on this board, why you were, you know, maybe asked to be members of this board. And we love hearing all the wonderful announcements and the ways that y'all show up here. One of the things that I wanted to invite y'all to is to think about some feedback you could share with us about what your experiences have been like going through the West Hartford school system. We know we have a great district, but we also know that there's room for improvement. And y'all are like, what you have to say and your experiences matter more than anything. And so just, you know, thinking about, and it can be however you want, whether it's sharing, you know, verbally or y'all coming together and writing something up and sharing with us, to just help us advocate for, for you all, for the future students in this town. And to really just reflect on what your experiences are like and what you need from all of us. Because I think all the adults are trying their best, but none of us are y'all. We're not going through this experience. And so I think like, I'd love to know before y'all graduate, what are things that we can do to improve the district? And what are the experiences that you've had? And what advice would you give us moving forward? And so y'all can think about how you want to deliver that to us, but we'd love to hear it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you. And before we transition on, again, you, I apologize. Pardon me, I didn't tilt my head. Jason, yes.
I was just going to point out that I think Sarah left something out of her Hall announcements.
Jason, absolutely. Yes, please.
I, I believe that you won the Exchange Club Student Youth of the Year Award. So congratulations.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jason, for reminding us. Congratulations. And I love that you both gave each other a high five. Excellent, excellent. All right. Well, with that, again, you both are students first and foremost. So if you need to depart early this evening, please do so with no hesitation. All right? Thank you both so much again. You continue to represent your schools very, very well. And with that, we will move on to unfinished business, which we have none of. And now on to new business, which we do not have any of. So we shall go on to our staff communications and reports and receive our superintendent's report. Mr. Vicines, to you.
Thank you very much. And my report really is, given the time of year, so many things to celebrate. I want to, I want to add to some of the celebrations that we've already heard. And kudos on everything that you've shared. You've taken some of my thunder here. But I'm excited to announce that King Philip had three top winners in this year's UConn Letters About Literature Contest at Level One, which is grade four to six. We had a top prize and an invited reader, Cam Lansing. Kimberly Harrell is the teacher. And he wrote a piece, "The Remarkable Journey of Coyote Sunrise." Or, excuse me, he wrote a letter about, about that piece. We had winner A.J. Solerno, also from Ms. Harrell's class. And at Level Two, in grade seven to eight, we had a winner, Erin Shamstein, who's in Mrs. Drewan's class. Just very, very proud of them for that amazing feat. I'm excited to, also in King Philip, I'll stay with him for a minute, Christine Zeiner. She won a CEA Fund Teachers Grant. She was one of only 62 recipients out of just under 300 applicants. And I talk about these at the end of the year each year because they're just dramatic professional development opportunities for our teachers. She will go this summer to experience Puerto Rico, their art, their music, their food, and the language of, as she describes it, "La Isla del Encanto", which I think means the island of love, alongside fellow Spanish teachers from around the state to build culturally rich curriculum and some community connections, bringing those back to the, back to the classroom. We have other Stock Market Club winners. Lots of students here I need to get to know personally. The SIFMA Foundation proudly announced the middle school, sixth grade students, Lauren Mason, Hannah Mello, and Naomi Kamshi. They placed in the year-long Stock Market Game Competition at the Middle School Division. They were among, they were among the six year-long teams that achieved the highest portfolio of values in the competition across the state. And they were recognized alongside their teachers in their schools at a recent award assembly. Our Connerd Girls Basketball, I didn't catch if you mentioned this, if so, if I'm repeating, I apologize. They were recently honored with the Basketball Officials Organization Provides a Sportsmanship Award. And we're so very proud of our Red Wolf spirit and the demonstration of leadership both on and off the courts by our, by our Connerd Girls Basketball. I have to mention Connerd Solo Choir Performance. You mentioned the Sonheim that, that were one. But I attended this, this weekend at St. Thomas Church. And I was blown away by the performances and by the personal statements that were given by the seniors as they sort of handed off the reins to our juniors. And then the comments from the juniors sort of thanking the seniors for their guidance and their mentorship. And Herschel, who you all got to meet, he was among one of the students that was playing there. And I had a, an unsolicited report from a parent who came forward and just talked about the personal impact of our arts program in general. And, and talked to me for five minutes. It was, it was amazing. Carolina Gazuski, a world language teacher at Bugbee and Webster Hill Elementary Schools, has been honored as the 2025-2026 Connecticut Council of Language Teachers Teacher of the Year Award. So very, very proud for her. This award is presented to a world language teacher who demonstrates excellence in their craft, outstanding dedication to students, involvement and impact in the professional community, and a promotion of understanding, of respect for the multilingual and multilingual world in which we live. So Carolina is just an absolute talent. We're so thrilled. I did want to share, just given that we're still in May, the impactful presentation of Sharon Kornman, a guest speaker for Jewish American Heritage Month at Bristol Middle School. She's shared a very powerful family history and how members of her family were hidden and protected during World War II. And we thank all of the different speakers and events that we've had this, this month. And we continue, it makes a big difference in terms of, in terms of how we celebrate our different cultures. Yesterday, we celebrated, speaking of, our annual Mentor Recognition Breakfast. It was a sight to be seen. The auditorium was absolutely packed with adult and student volunteers, certainly our mentees, their families, and community members. And we had short remarks from the Governor's Prevention Council, as well as a stirring keynote delivered by Mr. Paul Mounds, who's vice chair for the council, but also vice president for Community, Corporate, and Government Relations at Yale New Haven Health. And he gave a very stirring personal address about the role of mentorship in his life and, and really was a charge to continue that type of service. As I came in today, I was extremely, extremely proud to learn news that the town of West Hartford has been recognized in a recent U.S. News and World Report poll as number nineteen nationwide in the top places in which to live in the country. And it is based heavily on things like quality of life features, which certainly includes education, as well as the availability of healthcare and the state economy and infrastructure. We were the number one town within Connecticut as a whole. And just for perspective, there, there were 850 that, that they surveyed. The number two town in the state of Connecticut was number 440. So nationwide. So this, this is a huge accolade, both on the town side and on the school side we share in this celebration. And I want to take this opportunity to give thanks to all of our teachers, all of our parent educators, our teaching assistants, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, our school security, our SROs, everyone who really makes this difference. This is, this is a difference made in the classroom, face to face with children, face to face with families, our clinicians, our, our family liaisons and supports. They are owed a dramatic round of applause for that award. So I submit that. And pending any questions, that is my report for this evening.
Wonderful report indeed. Teammates, any questions or comments regarding the superintendent's report we've received?
I'm just curious about the Career Pathway or Career Signing Day event? And if you could tell a little more about how that played out?
Absolutely. No, thank you. I certainly have that as something to highlight, but heard it already. It was a phenomenal event. It was held here at the Town Hall Auditorium. We had students from both Connerd and Hall. And they were presented, there was a short sort of remarks given about each student in terms of the pathway that they were pursuing. They were given a small token that was very appropriately created by students in the career and technical education systems. Through our woodworking and design classes, they created a base. And then on some of the 3D printers, they mounted it with something. And they were personalized relative to the specific pathways that they were going. I believe it was the Skills 21 group that, that we, or modeled this after. And we invited in, it was, it was both celebratory in terms of what their pathways were, but we also took opportunity to invite in a number of community partners, businesses, and, and folks that we've partnered with so that the students could, could also have kind of a career fair afterward. And students went around to each of those partners. We had folks from, we had Chris there from the Chamber of Commerce. We had folks there on the town side from Economic Development. And it, it, it was a phenomenal afternoon. And the first of many to come. I, I want to credit, you know, certainly Brian Cohen, Jocelyn Tamborilla Noble, Sarah Isaacs were there. Certainly Ann McKernan, Eileen Eustace. The effort and the focus that they've been putting into uplifting our career paths is, is demonstrable and it's, and it's really paying off with events such as these that, you know, there was a student speaker who, oh, and his name escapes me. Cam, what's his, what was his? Cam Brown, who's, I had a chance to chat with him. And he, he provided short remarks about, you know, his pathway, what he intended to do, and the meaningful nature of, of the whole event. And being able to, you know, find his path and see, see it as recognized, valued, and important. He, he talked about a personal experience when he was growing up. And it was a neighborhood barber shop where, where he would go before and after school and kind of individuals who, you know, he, he slowly grew a relationship with as an adolescent who taught him some, some really core values about how he presents himself, how he shakes hands, how he looks people in the eye, how he greets people. And it motivated him to, kind of, kind of fell in love with this concept of barber shop. So he plans to go to school, get his certificate and that, and open his own business. And he, he wants to pay it forward. So the whole day was kind of like that, talking with kids. It was, it was a great event.
Any other questions or comments regarding our superintendent's update? Wonderful thing shared. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to staff reports and board discussions, where we shall receive our annual inspection and evaluation for indoor air quality. So as the team comes to the table, we'll pass it to Mr. Vicines to introduce.
Sure. So I think you, you know the, both these gentlemen very well. Dr. Morrow and Mr. Robert Palmer are director for Plant and Facilities on both the town side and on the school side. Very, very grateful for their work. And this is a, a report that I believe, I understand is mandatory from the state of Connecticut. It's one of their joys in life regardless. And they're here to, to walk you through the pieces.
Good evening. All right. So this is a new report that is a result of a new statute that was put in place last year that requires school districts to conduct annual inspections and evaluations of indoor air quality in each of their buildings and report that to the board and post those results publicly. And so we have done that. And so I'm going to turn it over to Bob Palmer, who can explain sort of our process in following the, the statute and can direct you, if you have any questions, to the actual individual reports and what are on them.
Thank you, Andy. So yes, Andy mentioned, this is a new state law that went into effect last year. There are actually two components. There's just the annual report, and then there's a five-year inspection program also, which requires us to hire a professional engineering firm or other types of professionals in the HVAC industry in order to evaluate our systems. It's a very similar process to what we did when we reopened after COVID, evaluating our systems, making sure they're working correctly. But it goes a little bit further and it, it speaks to the deficiencies of the buildings as it, as it relates to current code. We're not required to bring buildings to current code. Of course, it's a goal to bring them to current code at some point. But it does talk about the deficiencies and helps us identify capital projects for planning purposes in the future. So, so it's a two, so there's two prongs to this. Tonight, we're presenting the annual report. We are working also on the five-year report already. We engaged a firm to begin that process. We've already evaluated five buildings. We can begin to provide those results to the state in July of this year. And we'll do that as we work through. We're anticipating that we'll get through all 16 schools this calendar year and we'll be complete with that. So we'll have knocked off that as, as part of this program as well. But tonight, we're talking specifically about the annual inspection. This is a program, it's called, that utilizes the EPA program called Tools for Schools. We in West Hartford have been using Tools for Schools for almost 20 years now to evaluate indoor air quality in our school buildings. Not to this extent, but we had been doing the walkthrough inspection checklist for almost 20, like I said, 20 years. The State Department of Public Health used to provide training on this for about 10 years. For about 10 years since we've been doing the program. We engaged them several times to come out and train our staff. So we're well-versed in Tools for Schools. It's not a new program for us, but the, the additional checklist were, were new to us this year. So, so as you can tell, there are a series of checklists, six checklists that we were, are required to complete by various staff within the, the district. A lot of the burden of this falls on the head custodian at each building, unfortunately. So that's been there. A challenge for some of them. So, and it's really been a team effort. We've, we've worked with our head custodians. Our HVAC department is involved. And also, our manager of Building Services is in charge of the Integrated Pest Management Program, which is another component of this. And also, the kitchen manager is also part of this from Nutrition Services. So it's a real team effort to get this all compiled and put into, get the forms filled out completely and get them uploaded onto the website. So as, as Dr. Morrow referred, mentioned, we've already conducted the inspections. We did most of the inspections actually last fall. It's just taken us some time to get the, the information onto the, the right sheets and to get it in a presentable form. So, and we have made them publicly available on our website. Part of the requirement is also that we come to the Board of Ed and present this to you. And then also, we have to submit a form to DAS stating that we have completed the, the process as part of this. We actually don't submit the forms to DAS. They just want to know that we did it. They don't really want to read it. So the checklists are pretty straightforward. I hope you had a chance to go through them. The first one is that it talks about buildings and grounds, just basic maintenance and making sure things that are in order. Waste management checklist, it's, it's basically making sure that your dumpsters are in a proper location or managed correctly, that you're, you're removing waste on a regular basis. You're not, if you're storing waste in a building, we don't really store any type of waste in a building. If you're doing that, you have correct ventilation. The ventilation checklist is something new this year. Our HVAC foreman worked on that with, along with some of the other, of the office staff. You'll notice in sections five and six, five is the exhaust systems. And then six was the quantity of outdoor air. For a lot of the schools, we had to answer no on that because the five-year evaluation that we're doing right now will help to answer those questions. So for the five buildings that we have already done that, we were able to answer those questions in the affirmative. But for the remaining schools, we just haven't, we haven't had the ability to evaluate those, those criteria at this point. So, and we will do so in the next year. So the walkthrough inspection checklist, I've mentioned before, we've been doing that for, for 20 years already. And that's a, a pretty intensive process. It involves a team of people from each building, typically the principal, a teacher or staff member, the head custodian, and a parent are the team. And what they do is they send out a survey to the entire building asking about specific questions about indoor air quality. They get the feedback and then they do a get the feedback and then they do a tour of the building, specifically looking at concerns that were brought up by the occupants of the building and looking for general types of things in the building, potential issues within the building. And then they complete a report and then that report is what has been submitted here and summarized by the head custodian for you. So that's a very intensive project. It takes a lot of time to get the survey done. It takes time to do the tour and to compile all that information and to work your way through it. So we do identify quite a few problems in that area. Things, some things are quite simple. It's a heating or cooling comfort issue. It could be just a stained ceiling tile that just needs to be changed out. You know, we're looking for things like water coming into a classroom, maybe dusty conditions that aren't being addressed correctly in the cleaning process. So we do catch a lot of little things and it's good preventative kinds of actions that end up being the result there. So IPM is Integrated Pest Management. That's another state program that we're mandated to do that involves the use of pesticides or insecticides on school properties. It's very restrictive. We can only apply in certain conditions and making notice to the building occupants. We do, it's very, it's very regulated. We can only do certain things at certain times. We can never do anything with children present on the property. So it's a very strict program, but it's the right program. So we do comply with that and it's just that. And then the kitchen checklist is very straightforward as well. It's just looking for cleanliness and the overall condition of the kitchen facilities in the schools. So with that, I can certainly answer any questions you might have about the programs and/or any of the individual reports for the schools.
All right. Thank you very much. Teammates, any questions or comments regarding the information we've received? Claire?
Yeah. So I'm curious, it's on, this report is the inspection and evaluation of indoor air quality. And I understand why ventilation, waste management would fall in that. But can you explain why food services and grounds maintenance, some of these things that you say that we check on, don't really have to do that much with air?
Yeah, you could say that, but you also have to remember that if the area surrounding a building is the source of the air coming into the building. So that is an important factor, I think. And I think that the cleanliness of the kitchen, yeah, I'm not quite sure how they make that connection.
And the other thing is, I'm really glad that you take teacher input through surveys and then tour and investigate because depending on when you check air quality, it can be very different from a springtime check, middle of the winter check. And the teachers that are in the building, you know, year-round have a real good perspective that I'm glad is included. From what I understand, OSHA regulations don't pertain to school environments. Is that correct?
They do pertain to, yeah, they are, OSHA could be involved if it's a employee complaint or work-related complaint.
Okay. But as far as temperature, that's not?
Temperature is regulated by the Health Department.
Okay.
Right. So and we typically do perform the surveys October, November, as soon as we kind of close up the buildings and turn on the heat.
Right.
That's when we do these inspections because that's typically when we're getting less fresh air into the building. So the windows aren't open. So that's the time that they recommend you do the inspections and that's when we do do them. So.
Thank you. Any other questions or, Shannon, yes?
Related to the five-year requirement, if I recall correctly, that's a fairly large line item in the budget. And there was a comment, I believe, that maybe that would go away. Is there any update on that front?
No news on that yet. So, yes.
But I also understood the state of Connecticut had a lack of providers and that if everyone had to do it in five years, it would be an impossible task?
Yeah, the original plan was to have it done within, was supposed to be due January 1st of 2025. There are 1,300 schools in Connecticut and about six firms that can do this work. So there was a problem. Yeah. So now it is a five-year inspection and you can do 20% per year. So they figured that. We just decided to bite the bullet and go for it. So it will be done this year.
Other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you both very much. Thank you. Now moving on to Hall High School, New England Association of Schools and Colleges' Decennial Accreditation Visit. As we make the transition.
So as the folks get seated, and I know they have a team, I'll introduce Eileen and Eileen Eustace, our Director of Secondary Education, and I will allow her in a moment to introduce the team once they're settled. But the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, they are the accrediting body that comes in and essentially evaluates our high school programs on a set of nationally recognized standards. They do so throughout the state of Connecticut and New England, as their name would suggest. And Hall, I had the privilege to be at Hall High School for some of their visit and had the opportunity to engage with the accrediters. And they had, unsurprisingly, a very strong, very positive report. So not only are they accredited, as one would expect, but there were really a lot of accolades that were put onto Hall for the strength of the programming and the strength of growth. So without further ado, I don't want to steal any of their thunder. I'm going to ask Eileen to introduce everyone.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We're really excited to be here tonight and to celebrate the amazing work and achievements of Hall High School as highlighted in their recent NEASC Decennial Accreditation Visit, as the superintendent just shared. It was really, there was so much hard work that went into this, but I will say the payout with what the visiting team shared, it was really incredible. Not surprising, of course, but it really feels great to be, to have your work validated and know that your hard work is paying off. So with me here tonight, we have Mrs. Sarah Isaacs, Principal of Hall High School, and we have our two co-chairs of the Building-Based NEASC Committee, and we have Dr. Justin Boucher, Social Studies Teacher, and Dr. Kathleen Coghill, who is a science teacher. So our agenda for this evening includes a brief overview of NEASC and the 10-year accreditation cycle, the priority areas based on the school's self-study, as well as highlights from the recent decennial visit in March and next steps for this work. So just to share, for those of you that may not be familiar, NEASC stands for New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And within the association, they have various commissions that will accredit various schools, independent schools, other types of private schools, as well as public schools. So the Commission on Public Schools engages schools in a voluntary collaborative process to determine alignment with its qualitative standards of accreditation. So although it's voluntary, it is important for schools to engage in this process for a variety of reasons. One, NEASC provides a framework for schools to evaluate their own programs and take action to help improve student outcomes. It also shows a commitment to high-quality education based on rigorous, research-based standards. Earning the accreditation demonstrates that your school consistently meets and exceeds highest levels of quality as well as accountability. So noted above, you'll see the five accreditation standards. And then within each standard are several principles of effective practice with identified benchmarks. So for example, if you're taking a look at the Student Learning Standard, there's many principles that are nested underneath that overall standard. Principles for Effective Practice that could be related to written curriculum, instructional practice to meet all, to meet all learning needs, as well as strong connections to our vision of the graduate. Those are just a few of the principles that are embedded with that particular standard. So as we mentioned, Hall should be very proud as the visiting team was very complimentary and rightfully so. It was really a great visit. And so with that, I am going to turn it over to Kathleen, who will talk a little bit about the 10-year cycle.
So just to overview, it is a 10-year process and we are starting, or we started a couple of years ago with the self-reflection. So the self-reflection involves and is by design a very collaborative process. So the goal with that self-reflection is to get everybody involved, to get community insight, to get student insight, to get staff insight and get everybody to collaborate on the report. It starts with a survey that's sent to students, to families and to staff. And then we got together a pool of core 25 staff members at Hall and divided them into those five standard groups. And each group was tasked with looking at the evidence from the surveys, with looking at evidence within the school, within the curriculum, within the way and the processes that we operate according to all of the principles and the standards. After that, they drafted a report for each standard and the report culminated, it was a 95-page report that was submitted to NEASC, the accreditation, in preparation for that collaborative conference visit, which happened in 2023. So the collaborative conference visit is a visiting team of administrators and teachers from various places within New England, but usually within the state of Connecticut. And they come in and they review our report. They meet with teachers. They meet with the Board of Education, I believe there was a meeting. They also meet with students, staff and family members. They visit classes and that's a three-day process. The goal of that collaborative conference is to look at the priority areas that the collaborative conference report identified as our key areas for growth over the next six, seven years. So once that is done, they acknowledge that, they make any recommendations, and then we start the, number three, that improvement planning process. So the improvement planning process is developing the plan that, for addressing those priority standards over the next seven years of work. So that plan includes actionable items, steps, so that we can achieve and move forward on those standards and principles within the five standards. So after two years, they come in and see us at the decennial visit. That's going to be discussed a little more in just a moment. And then we just finished that process in March. And the next step is going to be to start that planning and submit a three and a six-year report. So that's the whole 10-year cycle. And so we just finished that decennial visit piece right now.
So the process of preparing for the decennial visit included identifying five priority areas that we, as a school community, identified as the areas that are most in need of our attention. In the case of Hall, it was pretty easy to agree on those areas, which you see behind you, partially because in most cases, the work had already been in process and had been things that we'd been working on for some time and things that were core to our educational commitment. The first of those priority areas, this is really big for NEASC, but it was also big for us, it's big for West Hartford, is documenting and aligning curriculum resources to the vision of the graduate. Obviously, the vision of the graduate work and curricular resources long predate working on this in 22, 23. But as we were looking at the NEASC standards, we were interacting with staff and students, it was really clear that this was something that should be on the top of our list. Conard is six months behind us, so it was really easy to align on the idea that this was a district-wide process. And as I said, already in progress. The second key area we wanted to, we aligned on was reviewing the ESAL program and the supports that we have for our English language learners. That came up time and again in our conversations with teachers and with students. We also wanted to take a look at our social, emotional and health services. This was a more broad-based, but it also had some facilities concerns because we were having a lot of backups in the nursing office. And so there were some facilities changes that we were interested in by the time they came back for the decennial visit. The nurses' office and a number of other spaces had been renovated, making that probably the most achieved of the goals that we set. We wanted to look at collaborative time for staff, professional learning committees. Groups are a pretty big commitment, both among the teachers at Hall, that was organic and also in conversation with the district. And finally, we wanted to take a look at equitable access to advanced coursework. This is an area that Hall excels in many ways, but it's still, right, an ongoing conversation to make sure that all of our students have access to the best things that we do. So that was a thing that we wanted to focus on as well. And all of these were organic, bubbled up, came up time and time again in surveys among students and among staff. We can jump ahead.
Okay.
And so the decennial visit occurred in March. It was a four-day onsite visit rather than the three-day onsite visit where we sort of ratified the priorities two years ago. So it's really a big progress check. They're again, talking to everybody. They were onsite for four days. I don't know of anyone in the building who didn't have a conversation and many people outside the building who got to have a conversation with the six-member visiting team. They reviewed all of our reports on how we had done over the two years. They visited classrooms. They met with just about everybody and they were just, if I can say something personally, they were just smiling the whole time, right? Like we kept hearing time and time and time again that, oh, I want to take this home. Oh, I liked how you do this here. Oh, I wish we could do this where, in the schools that we come from. So it was really, really a very positive experience. And that was March and now we're following up with their commendations and recommendations.
So there were quite a few commendations, which is very encouraging and nice that it's supporting our process and the hard work that everybody's been putting so much into all the time. The list of commendations is longer than this slide allows. The full list is in the report, but we wanted to pick out some key commendations that we felt were very important to Hall and to who we are as a school community. So one is the commitment to equitable practices, as well as a strong support for ELL students. And we recognize that that's also a priority area of ours, but that kind of is echoing that they're seeing that we are moving forward and doing good work and we're committed to continuing that work. They admired our robust professional learning opportunities, the two-hour Wednesdays, the establishment of the PLCs, and they acknowledged the facility upgrades, the capital improvement plan that we put together that with a very robust set of understanding what we're going to improve on year after year, including the facility upgrades to the Science Department and the nursing offices, the increased AP/ECE access. This was also recognized by the College Board, which gave us the AP Access Award and a gold status access on the AP Honor Roll. As well, the continuous commitment to curriculum improvement. We've actually achieved a lot over the last two years and we are in the process of continuing that work and also making sure that that vision of the graduate is central to all of what we do at Hall, including within the curriculum documents and within the activities and the soft skills that we're trying to develop in students as well.
Let me look at the, there we go. As we look at the recommendations, I think the entire staff sees it as such a support of the call to action we already feel and see and just an opportunity to improve in the service of students. We are focused on the completion of our curriculum in its new format, ensuring We are focused on the completion of our curriculum in its new format, ensuring that it aligns with district expectations and best practices. As part of this effort, we can, we are committed to strengthening the integration of the vision of the graduate across curriculum, instruction, and assessment, helping ensure that our students not only meet academic standards, but also grow in the essential skills and dispositions that prepare them for life beyond high school. We are expanding the professional development opportunities for all staff focused on instructional practices that support our multilingual learners. We know that increasing the toolbox and providing that professional development will help all students and especially any student that really needs additional support. As our multilingual learner population grows, it's essential that all educators are equipped with effective strategies to meet the diverse language and learning needs. We will continue to provide training for staff in the use of our new emergency systems, ensuring the safety remains a top priority. In addition, we will maintain a strong emphasis on social, emotional well-being for our students by offering ongoing professional development and expanding the use of resources that support mental health and wellness. We will work toward providing all teachers with the opportunity to meet in professional learning communities or PLCs during the school day. These collaborative structures are critical for engaging in data-driven conversations, refining instructional practice, and ultimately increasing student learning outcomes. We look forward to developing time within our current schedule structure and the possibility to refine that if our schedule were to ever change a little bit. These recommendations reflect our ongoing commitment to supporting every student every day and continuing to grow as a learning community. Our next steps, following our decennial visit, we are now responsible for a series of follow-up actions that were touched upon before and are, will be outlined in our final report. We expect that that report will be out in June, and we will submit it for you to review. These recommendations are designed to support this continued growth, improvement, and we're fully committed to addressing each one with intention and care. As part of the NEASC process, we will formally report on our progress through the two required follow-up reports, the three and six report that we spoke about before, and both of which will provide updates on the steps we've taken to implement the recommendations and sustain our improvement efforts. And we look forward to reporting out on that. We are proud of the thoughtful preparation, the deep reflection, the broad community engagement that led to a successful accreditation visit. It was a true team effort, reflecting the professionalism and commitment of our staff, our students, and our families. I want to take a moment to express sincere gratitude to all those who contributed to Hall High School's NEASC accreditation process. A thank you to our NEASC committee chairs. Mrs. Gillian Carnes is one of our assistant principals, and of course, Dr. Boucher and Dr. Cockhill for their work throughout this multi-year process. Their commitment was just incredibly appreciated. For the outstanding leadership that and dedication that both of you brought through every stage of the process, and of course, I want to extend our deep appreciation to our Hall staff, especially everyone involved in all the process leading up to this moment, our students, our district leadership, for their thoughtful engagement, collaboration, and commitment to continuous improvement. And finally, to the Board of Education, thank you for your continued support of Hall High School. Your investment in our work and our students makes a meaningful difference every day.
And before they open it up for questions, I want to point out that Connerd High School will be going through this one year in succession from this, so they're one year out of phase with each other. So there will be another report. But hearing the Hall report when the visiting team was there, and the thing that stuck with me, and I want to compliment Sarah's leadership and really the culture at Hall, the students, it was the students that were interviewed by this visiting team over the four-day process, and the educators that were there could not fathom how positive the students were about their school. The pride that they took was something that stuck with me that they mentioned. And I have to give an equal shout-out to Kathleen and to Justin as co-chairs. I'm well aware from my time in the classroom and at Connerd and leadership of the commitment and the work as co-chairs for the entire committee. But as co-chairs, there is such a dramatic amount on your shoulders. It is very much a collaborative process that has led through teachers to assess the work of teachers in creating this, and from feedback from the teachers and the staff and the entire school community. And just as your superintendent, my gratitude for everything that you did for this. Thank you.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So lots of information, good updates. Teammates, any questions or comments regarding the feedback we've received from the accreditation process? Jason?
Really just a thank you, echoing everything that Paul has said, that you've all said about what goes into this process. It's absolutely incredible. I do think the highest praise you could possibly have gotten was that the students are so proud of Hall High School. I think that says it all. So thank you for your dedication. It makes a meaningful difference.
Other ques... Yes, Gail?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I had a question about your, I wanted to see how you worded this. I wrote it down, but... The curriculum documentation aligned to the vision of the graduate. So I don't know if you could just clarify a little bit what that means? Are you revamping the entire curriculum? Or how do you, how do you change a curriculum to meet the goals of, or the vision of the graduate?
It is going to be a district process, so I'm going to turn it over.
Yeah.
For the district perspective, so.
So when the team came a couple of years ago, we had a lot of, we have written curriculum, but some of it had been in maybe a little bit of a few different formats. And so one of the things that we did is we took the opportunity to revamp our curriculum template so that it aligns with the recommended standards that are coming out of NEASC. It does allow for the opportunity where you are purposeful in weaving in aspects of the vision of the graduate. So, for example, one of the aspects of the vision of the graduate is effective communication. So there's obviously content areas that align very tightly with effective communication. So we built aspects of effective communication into various courses in our curriculum documents. And the next step for that is to also lead to, how do you go about assessing that? Because eventually, they're going to want to know, how do you assess that students have actually met the various aspects of the vision of the graduate? And we want to be purposeful about that, and we want it to be embedded in our curriculum so it doesn't feel like a standalone. So it was not a major rewrite of curriculum, but one of the things that I am a big believer in, as someone who works in the curriculum instruction and assessment office, is that curriculum is an ongoing process. It's really important, and I think one of the things that NEASC allows for is for you to engage in that cycle to really take a deep dive and review your curriculum. And I will say, all of our departments have been engaging in that. What we're starting to see is more coherence in terms of our assured activities, assessments, and that ties in a lot with our PLC work. They, everything really goes hand-in-hand with all of that. So not a major revamp of courses that we have, but certainly a tightening up and bringing that coherence across, not just from classroom to classroom, but also across buildings. Because we offer, for the, pretty much 99.9% of our courses are offered at both buildings, and it's really important that we ensure that all of our students are getting those same opportunities, because that's also part of our equitable practice as well.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Well, first of all, congratulations. It's very admirable to go through this entire process and stay the course. Just a curiosity around the recommendations, do you anticipate any obstacles or things that might be in the way of you advancing or making progress on some of the recommendations, or any resources that you need more access to? I'm just thinking, speaking as board member, like, is there anything we could do to make a more smooth glide path to you advancing on the recommendations?
No, thank you for that question, and we appreciate that support. I think that there is already so much support for these recommendations, and they went so hand-in-hand in with what we've been talking about as a district and through both at Hall and Connerd, and then also through our school development plans. They're really in alignment with what we're already planning for, for this past year and for the next year, and when we look at longer-term planning. You know, I feel really confident that as any barrier comes up, that we have such an open communication and support through all of you that I know that we'll be able to tackle that. And, you know, there are things that we're already talking about when we talk about, for instance, like expanding PLCs, you know, we're already talking, and I know there's been conversations around would a different schedule be more beneficial to creating more time? So I do feel that a lot of the conversations are already happening, and we really appreciate the support.
Just from my lens, I'd add, you know, I think as we talk as a board about, you know, our budget process, our approach, you know, we speak often about, I speak often about the importance of sustainment of programs, you know, when you think about this report and the accolades that they receive, and the sense that we do have the tools, we have the processes, we have the resources, and we have the structure and the vision for continuous improvement. We know our results, you know? I think tonight's announcement about 19th in the country speaks for itself in terms of what, what the return on investment is for us. So, you know, I want to talk about, you know, the sustain, to Sarah's point, the sustainment of what we have. And at the same time, you know, we balance that. We obviously have to have fiscal responsibility, we have to understand we're in a tight budget. So as we, as we look for those efficiencies so that we can keep our costs low and be responsive to the very real financial burdens within the community and the country at large, you know, how do we do so without loss of our identity, loss of what is making such a dramatic and powerful impact for this community?
Claire?
So congratulations. I know a lot of work went into this, and to get this kind of result and that kind of feedback, especially in the visit, there's something in the report that we can all read, but what you experienced in the visit and the feedback in the actual moment, I'm sure, was something that you can't really express totally to us. The, for the evaluation, it just seems that a lot of the stuff that you're already doing was aligned to what they were looking for, so there wasn't the necessity for a dog-and-pony show, because it was already best practice, and you guys were doing it. And so now you have some direction. So congratulations for that. The other thing I was wondering, this is for New England, can you, do you have an idea of what percentage of districts partake and choose this? It's voluntary, but is it, what are we looking at for the New England states?
I don't know of a public high school in the state of Connecticut that does not go through the process, so they're one of six accrediting, I believe it's six accrediting bodies across the United States, so they're regional. So NEASC takes care of the six New England states. And if you think about it, everybody needs that accreditation. So even when we evaluate students that are coming from outside programs, we always are looking to see if the program that they're in is accredited. So it is really important to have that accreditation, especially as outside agencies are looking at us, as we're sending students to post, out for post-secondary. They want to know that that accreditation gives them confidence in the fact that we are aligning with very rigorous standards of NEASC.
So it's voluntary, but everyone has to do it? And then if you, if you do it and you don't pass, is that something that you're then obligated to share out? Does a student have to come and say, "I'm coming from a non-accredited voluntary accreditation"?
I am lucky enough to not know the answer to that question.
Typically, typically what would happen is they have recommendations. So sometimes it might, in certain towns, it might help with, if they are in dire need of facility changes, right? And so they are able to then take this information from, you know, this association and commission to say, "We're going to lose our accreditation, and part of it is because we can't provide the educational program because our facility is an actual barrier." That's just one example. But typically, it is really meant to be a collaborative process, and it isn't just about like the stamp of accreditation. NEASC really wants to work with you to also improve. So they're always going to be working with schools to make those improvements as well.
Just to, in all seriousness, they were incredibly collaborative and supportive. There were many pre-meetings. They made themselves very available to us, and so it really felt like a collaborative process where they wanted to see us in our true form, and they also wanted to see our successes and where they could support us in moving our school forward.
And that's a little bit of a change in their process. Prior to, prior to this, it literally used to be they would show up every 10 years, and you would put on that, you'd send them that big report, you'd spend two to three years, and everybody would be scrambling to make sure they were meeting all of the standards. And so with their new iteration, with their standards, they condensed some of the standards so that there wasn't as too much repetition. And they really built this collaborative piece into it so that you, as the school, were identifying the priority areas, and they're basically validating or potentially making additional recommendations, but then working with you as you are working towards that decennial visit and then working on the follow-up.
Yeah, thank you, and congratulations as well. I'm patting y'all on the back, and I have some questions. I think, you know, like, I love that we're doing well, and, but I think about some of that SCL stuff that y'all talked about and thinking about like how we push things forward. And one of my questions is just like, what does, what does that look like, you know, particularly? I know our students are stressed. I know that students have opportunities to opt in to support, but it's not offered at the tier-one level. So I want to know how we're challenging ourselves to offer those things at the tier-one level to all students, the mindfulness, the social, emotional learning, and building that culture of belonging? While I know, you know, Teresa's team is going to get to that part, and theirs, it's not just Teresa's team's job to carry that work. And so I want to know how, you know, how does that factor into this report? I know we still do have issues at our schools and issues at Hall with racialized harm and antisemitism and all those things. And while we're doing great, like, I want us to be real about like some of the cultural things too. And as a board member, I just want to know like, what are we doing? And what's the plan forward with those things? And yeah, just want some specifics.
Thank you, and we absolutely agree that this is just support for us to continue our work. So from the time of the collaborative conference to this visit, some very specific things that we've added is, you know, we applied for the SBGI grant through the state, and we've added, and been able to train a number of our teachers and our clinical staff in restorative practices. We have worked very, and I think one of, something I hold very dear is that is not just one group's work, it is all of our work and all of our responsibility. And I've seen a lot of staff jump in and take on the trainings and take on the professional development that allows them to really create more of a culture of restorative, in a restorative nature, just within their classroom. I know in our own faculty meetings, we run circles very regularly. That's how we started our faculty meetings, I think, throughout the whole fall, just so that we, as a staff, can, one, model those practices, but also create a more collaborative environment, because that's important for our students to see. When we look at professional development, we dedicate multiple CSIs or those two-hour Wednesdays across the, across the year to, again, building that toolbox for teachers, whether it's trauma-informed practices. We're looking next year at making sure that... We're looking next year at making sure that there is a piece of that training, whether it's equity, diversity work, trauma-informed practices, throughout all our building CSIs so it doesn't just live by itself, because it doesn't just live by itself. And so we've really worked to bring those pieces. Another, just a highlight is we created across all the secondary schools that, it had, it's like a symbol of helping hands and then everybody's logos in it and we've put them in spaces where students can seek help and support, safe spaces and they're across all our middle schools and high schools and though they have different logos, the hands are the same, so any student knows that whatever building they're in, if they're having a hard time, that that office or that space is somewhere where they can seek an adult that is there to support them and trained to support them. So those are just some concrete examples and I completely agree and feel excited and empower, and just ready to take on more work. Like this is, this is the next step, right? And so it's been, it was great to get all the accolade and those pieces and I appreciate all the work, but I also see it as an incredible call to action.
Can I piggyback one thing? I just, because I want to clarify, not so much for you, Latoya, but for the listening audience, at the tier one level, because you mentioned something about tier one and what access do children have to kind of social emotional learning at the tier one level at the high school? I want to talk about that because it's fully available in the following way, when we think about what that really means. I mean, 20 years ago, a high school teacher might, you know, stereotypical, not a Hall high school teacher, but a stereotypical theoretical high school teacher might say something, "I'm a teacher of content." And I would say that our high school teachers are teachers of students, they're teachers of human beings, they're teachers of future leaders, they're teachers of unique individuals and it's always been a hallmark of this district that we recognize the power of relationships. We try to create an understanding in a culture in our classrooms where there's perspective taking. All the efforts that Sarah just talked about are just adding depth to, of capacity for our teachers to be able to do this effectively and hopefully expertly as, you know, as teachers build their skill in this over the course of their careers. And so I just wanted to offer that as, you know, that is, that is the inroad at the tier one level that we try to create. Do we have bumps along the road? Do all the students get it at the same speed? Do all of our teachers get it at the same speed? Of course not, so there's always going to be bumps along the road, which is why we have to have continuous professional development. But I just, for the, for the listening audience, I just want to make sure that everyone understands there's, there's certainly no lack of attention and effort that's applied at that, right at that ground level. There's lots of intervention work that we do with lots of very skilled professionals and teacher leaders and everything else in addition to.
Yeah, absolutely and I just want to respond to that and I, you know, thank you for all that feedback. I guess what I'm thinking of, like I think of some of these, some of the incidences that are, that happened in our schools that are at the tier one level that impact the culture and climate and I do want to challenge us to address those issues as tier one issues. Racialized harm, those are conversations I think that shouldn't be, students opt in if they want to talk about what happened, but the whole school, everybody in that morning is having that conversation at breakfast, not just about racialized harm, but all the different harms that we see that are now like resurfacing too. Not that we've completely strayed away, but there was a time where like this died down, but things are resurfacing. And so I think that is just my challenge for us to like think about how we can look at those things as whole community issues that we addressed from day one with all of the students and we're really explicit about it. And then the other thing is, we as board members, like we're here to support as well and so I think the more open and transparent we are as a team, we can also, you know, we want to hear, like if we need to have certain, like if we as a community need to have certain conversations with families about the conversations that they need to be having, like we need to know that because it's not just on y'all. You're doing the best that you can as well and there's a huge part of this that the, that parents and the community also need to lift up. And that's why I'm bringing this up because this is a public meeting and it is recorded and it, other people can see and hear this and I think that onus is on our entire town. And so I wanted to just, that's why I'm like, I just want us to be transparent about it because it's not just on y'all, you know? So I'm saying it's not just on Teresa's team, but it's not just on y'all. It's on this whole town to rise. We all need to be having these conversations and we all need to hold the line for our community and we need to be real about what we're going to tolerate and what we're not going to tolerate. And so just, I hope that y'all can also see us as resources and advocates too, because we all want the best for our students. So I also want to just give that context that that's the space that I'm coming from, that we're just, we're in this with y'all. So, thank you.
And I think to close the loop, in terms of bringing it even back to the NEAS process, one of the things that's emphasized throughout all of the standards is your commitment to the vision of the graduate. And if we think about it, part of the vision of the graduate is acting with honor and integrity. And so we have to continue to really be explicit with all those things, with all of our stakeholders, that if we continue to hold true to our mission, our vision of the graduate, we should be able to continue to move that work forward and have it really be coherent and have people see it in everything that we do.
Ethan, your hand was raised.
Yeah, it's a different vein. It's a 10-year process. I was just curious for the committee chairs, how long have you been working on this?
I started in 2019, fall of 2019, and so it was an exciting first year, leading into 2020.
That's fair.
This is actually my third NEAS. I came in when one was just ending. I went through one entire 10-year process and now I've just started my, you know, 2022 was the beginning of this current 10-year cycle.
So you're both doing the next 10 years too?
I think I might be done after this one.
Well, I think it's already been said, but thank you for all the hard work.
Gail.
Sorry, I just want to go back to my original question about how you integrate the curriculum into the vision of the graduate and you just measured, mentioned honor and integrity. I'm just curious if you could give me an example, how you would integrate that into curriculum?
I will say, when you're talking about curriculum specifically, that is one of the tougher ones, so sometimes you look to other measures, perhaps some of the work that we're doing through our community lessons within our developmental school counseling programs, but I think any opportunity that you have to be able to work in conversations, reflection and so forth and opportunities for students to grow in those areas in curriculum. Having been an English teacher, you know, I see lots of opportunities where you can work on having discussions surrounded about that, pulling pieces of, various pieces of literature where you can talk about that. And then you do have to work on opportunities for students to be able to demonstrate that and it could be through some of their practices and behaviors in the classroom, but there are other various sources of evidence that we would, you can use when you're looking for, in terms of honor and integrity. I will say that one is definitely a little tougher to weave in when you're looking to measure that in actual behaviors.
Guess what I'm asking is, obviously a teacher can weave that into a particular lesson, but is it integrated into the actual curriculum so that, you know, in whatever class you've decided to integrate this, it's across the board?
I'm going to go back, you know what's ringing in my head as I'm here, is the previous presentation we just had, for instance, on computer science and the integration of artificial intelligence and the ethics that are built around that. So that's, I think, a concrete example, but I think what you're recognizing and what Eileen is affirming is, you know, it has to be more deliberate. It's not, you know, it's not the, necessarily the content objective, I'm going to list up in my math lesson, but I need to, I think through this process, I need to be thinking about what are the intersections with that and what are the connections beyond just classroom policies around integrity and stuff like that? How do I, how do I talk about the application of a content in concert with, you know, ethical use or something about integrity? So it's definitely, one of the reasons why there's an effort to ensure that your curriculum is, you know, has alignment with your vision of the graduate. Otherwise, your vision of the graduate is just, you know, it's a, it's a nice statement, but how, how have you achieved it? And how can you, you know, if it's supposed to be what graduates evolve into, how can you assure it?
No, I mean, I think it's, I think it's great. I'm just curious, you know, how you're doing it and I appreciate you giving me those examples and the computer science is actually a very good example.
And I will say, full transparency, that is a next layer of work in terms of, while we have made connections to the vision of the graduate, we really have to get to a point where students have opportunity to self-assess as well as where we also as educators have an opportunity to provide feedback for students in terms of how they are doing. So we're not there yet, but we're making those, we're at the beginning stages of making those tighter connections.
Let me tap off on that question. Does, do schools have a code of conduct?
Yeah, we, there's a student handbook, Sarah, you can speak to that more explicitly.
Yeah, so our student handbook and we work in conjunction with Connerd to make sure we're in alignment, it has outlines around academic honor, honor code, it has it about being, you know, citizenship and it outline, and it outlines for students and we do go over it in our, through community and through class meetings and making sure it's explicitly clear for students.
Because I've been in institutions such as the Army when I became an officer, where it was beaten into me, this is the way you operate, in a honest and upright, and I know from my kids that they've been at colleges where it's very stressed and important. So, I mean, it's one half in the handbook, but it's just, it never occurred to me to ask the question before.
Yes, and we work to address it really throughout the year, whether, that's how we open school is students, every student meets with all the administrators, we're up on stage, we're talking about our expectations, we're making them explicit, we have those conversations again at the mid-year and then we also work through our community block where students are in smaller groups where they can discuss the handbook and then we're working to add in pieces where students are actually in front of students, talking about the handbook, because really that's, I think, the most powerful way to make it meaningful and using student leaders and to reinforce that.
No, just from personal experience, when it's done effectively, it's very, very, it's great, but it's not always effective. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I will make a comment and I appreciate Ethan, what you were sharing and I certainly know we're encouraging other ways of supporting the retention of what is in the handbook. You were make, we don't beat, just want to make sure I'm saying for the record, but I appreciate you saying that though. But with that, we'll say-
It wasn't beating, but it-
I got you, got you.
It had to be.
Yes, there you go, yes. But I echo all that has been shared, wonderful job, congratulations for what has been achieved, but I also want to say congratulations for what you continue to aspire to do. I appreciate and respect the constructive feedback that you are receiving without defense and hearing you describe the process and a 10-year process, my, that is quite a long length of time, but hearing how it is one, I think you used the word as collaborative, it's a collaborative process and you use the word evolve and also self-assessment. I think that speaks volumes because when there is that level of intimate engagement, that helps increase a sense of accountability. If you feel like I'm contributing to establishing what bar we're striving to meet, then you're going to work even harder. So thank you for encouraging our students to, I have to say, Sarah, you have quite a stare. Oh my, yes you do. Oh, a smile, that's all right, no, that's good, that's good, but a very focused look you have, but like the smile, all right, right? But wonderful job overall, thank you so very much and continue to raise that bar of expectation. Thank you for allowing me to tease you, sir, but wonderful job nonetheless. Thank you very much. All right, thank you. And as we transition, we now are prepared to receive our Equity and Diversity Council a year-end review and so teammates are making their way and we'll pass it to Mr. Vicinus.
Excellent. I will give them a moment or two to arrange themselves and get their tech set up, but and certainly Teresa Rangel, our Executive Director of Equity Advancement is no stranger to this audience. This is one of a series of two reports that the board will receive. So next month, in June, we will, as part of our end-of-year reports, we will have what has traditionally been called our Equity and Excellence Report, where we kind of report out on our end-of-year measures and results. This particular report and this fine group that's in front of you are representatives of our Equity and Diversity Council, so God bless. This is, these are many of the movers and shakers that really help to drive the work forward within our schools as one arm of our effort and this report is kind of intended to highlight the work that has been ongoing across the 16 schools to drive our larger effort within our equity mission. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa to introduce her team and lead off this report.
Well, hello everyone. It seems like it's been a while since I've been in front of you, at least, you know, I can't say just me because obviously I have this fabulous team with me, but I think since November, right, is last time I directly reported. So this is a great opportunity for, actually a follow-up to that, if we can take way back to November, we had talked, I was here with Henley Solomon and Melissa Zisch who were here, who was our co-chair of our EDC team, so this actually is, it's actually perfect timing with the perfect group and I'm surrounded with excellence all around me. So I'm actually going to start to this side. From Sedgwick School, I have with me Katie Seymour and Lisa Helvey who are joining us who are going to report on their school. To my right, I have Ben Norland from Hall High School. Look at that, Sarah, you're still represented here. And then of course, I have next to Ben here, I have Shannon who will be joining, who was, wow, is this your last report probably in front of the board as Principal of Aiken School, because she's going to be joining our party here at Central Office and next to her is Ryan from Morley School. Ryan Kelly. So I'm super excited to be here and to have an opportunity to share, when I was here with you in November, we were excited and motivated and I have to tell you, like the last couple of minutes, like we were in the audience getting a little bit, you know, not sleepy, but definitely we had some time and you guys just like fired us right back up again, so it's awesome. I love the smiles and the laughs. So I wanted to kind of get us started with framing the work that we've been doing this year, since I haven't spoken directly to you since November and this is kind of like the flow of information we're going to give. We're going to talk about who we are as an EDC, what the EDC is, and I think the best way to do that is with the voices of EDC members who are actually, I have a video that I'm going to show that is going to work, Paul. And then a quick overview of the work that we've done this year with some of the focuses that we've had and then I'm going to stop talking and I'm going to shift it to my colleagues here who are going to talk about the work in action because one of the things that I'm super aware of and super conscious of is that this work, there's a lot of lip service to equity work, there's a lot of theoretical thought behind it, there's a lot of, you know, hearts and warm feelings, but equity in action and the work it actually takes to make change happen is grittier than that, right? It's not seamless, it's not that smooth road, it comes with its challenges, but also comes, you know, the blessing that we have of being in West Hartford is there's a clear demand that we figure it out and as painful sometimes the process is to figure it out, we are committed to doing so. So I want you to have the opportunity for the bulk of the time to hear how equity works in action and for you to get a good sense of that across the grade levels. So we have two elementary, middle school and high school representatives, you can kind of see K through 12 what that looks like. We'll talk quickly about what's next and then obviously, time for questions. So, I'm going to click this and it is going to work, I swear. And if it doesn't, I have a backup plan.
The EDC is a resource- The EDC is a resource of people who have spent tremendous amounts of time learning and educating themselves, and putting hours and hours into the school system on a volunteer basis to make this world better, and so it is a beautiful resource of people who really care.
Doing this work is a very hopeful and inspiring part of our job. It's a problem that has this incredible result, which means, like, just kids are just succeeding and feeling more whole and growing.
That families feel like they belong, if they feel like they can walk into a school and be welcomed, and that they're really truly a part of that community, then they're going to help their kids do better, and they're going to feel better about being at school and being at West Hartford.
The value of the EDC is to really continue to push us as educators and our students in the pursuit of our mission for equity, which is really to challenge what we know, to seek new knowledge, but also to, as educators, be really well-versed in the communities around us to be able to serve all of our students.
When they're feeling seen, when they're feeling heard, when they're feeling valued, when they see themselves in what we're reading, when they can make connections to their own lives and their own identities, that's when we see the most engagement.
I think when staff feel valued and welcome, and that their experiences and perspectives are being respected, they're also happy to be here, happy to do their best work, they feel like they're included and that their voices are valued.
They're so excited to share their pictures of their family, and then it immediately creates this sense of, I don't just know you as my classmate, but I know you and your family. And not only are the children excited to share about who is in their family, then throughout the rest of the school year, when we're doing writing assignments, we're doing math assignments, not only can I add that into the work, and I can ask them, like, oh, how's your dog Cooper, and what's Sam up to, like a brother, they do that with each other. So, I think that is one thing, just right from the start of the year, is not just seeing my own individual students, but immediately creating that bridge with their families.
What makes someone feel like they belong, it could be different for everyone, it could be that poster on the wall, it could be some kind of thing that this teacher says, some kind of routine that they do, some kind of book that they read, some kind of word that they use, it could be something so simple. So, rather than us just guessing at it, this book Street Data, which was brought to us by the EDC, just has this great framework for us to say, here's how you can just find out.
When I get to be my authentic self, my students see that, and then I watch as they become their most authentic selves, and then as they have gotten older, they've come back and they're still that same kid. And that, to me, is the power of this work, is that when we change and grow and get to be exactly who we are, flaws and all, or in my case, singing and all, the kids rise to that occasion, they continue to learn and grow, but most importantly, they get to be and see the type of human that they want to be, and that's so important.
I'd love to say this work eventually stops, but our world doesn't stop changing, so the work will keep changing.
That's really my big hope, is that we can get so bogged down by so many things in education, and the data charts, and this and that, but really first and foremost, seeing people as humans and what they can bring is really the key.
The people that I teach with, my students, they don't all look like me, and they come from different places and they have different stories, and that's why I love my job. I get to hear their stories, I want to hear their stories, because they make me a better human, they make me a better teacher, the more that we connect with each other, the better things get. And so, my hope is that we'll continue on that same path, where we're identifying what our problem of practice is, gathering data from multiple perspectives, and really going for it, setting those action steps, and really taking steps towards meeting our goal.
Huge shout-out to Craig, who is always just so amazing at capturing the voices of, you know, of us collectively, and, and the joke that we have going around is that if we, if we entrust Craig with it, we will never look bad, we'll never sound bad. He's, he's just a blessing, I think, to the district, and his ability to be able to capture and get people comfortable in front of a camera, you have, you have no idea. Perhaps you can all do a video for us, no, like, okay, never mind, I saw some, I saw some reactions there from, yes, because I do think, I think it matters when we think about, when we talk about the work that we do and being able to kind of, you know, express that, and so, as a Board, I think you should, you know, if we do it, I think you should do it, it's, you know, one of the things that we do, right, we model. But this year, we, we've really taken a, a big focus on uplifting some, many things, but one of the things that we've definitely focused on as an EDC is centering student voice and lived experiences with our work through Street Data. It's, you know, we are always attempting to do the best that we can, and what we think as adults we should be doing, but much to, to Toya's point, you know, we have to listen to, to what students are, are trying to tell us, and so, we, we give them space, and we give them opportunities, and we've been really digging deep with allowing students to be able to reflect and tell us what they're thinking, not just students, our staff as well, because the reality is if, if those who are caring for our young are not feeling well and connected, then, then they're also not able to do their job to the best of their ability. So, really doing some deep listening, which has been a practice that we've been exploring this year. Professional learning and identity reflection, who we are as we, we work with our young people, is never not present, and so it's really important, when we think about building a restorative culture as a district, and what it means to actually have a restorative culture, you have to be able to kind of understand your own lens and what your experiences are with consequence, what are your experiences with being connected with people, and that work is, is always ongoing and revolves really, really, really deep reflection as one of the core elements of this work. If you're not able to reflect and think and be curious, you're, you are going to have a really hard time being able to connect and make bridges across differences, which, of course, our schools are just, you know, these, these great spaces where we have so many differences all together, and those differences just make us, you know, the magical place that, that West Hartford is. So, I said I wasn't going to talk anymore, I'm done. I'm going to actually pass it over, so we can look at some equity in action, and I believe first up is Morley School with Ryan.
All right, thank you, Teresa, and thank you, everybody, really appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight about some of the things that have been going on at Morley School. And, you know, I will say that our journey with our EDC work this year was awesome, and, and I think the thing that I want to share the most with you is that because of the guidance and the partnership we found with the EDC Committee, the awesome thing about this year is we made a pretty significant pivot from our beginning-of-the-year goal, our expectation for what we were going to work on, and that ended up being a tremendous learning opportunity for all of us, so that's what I'd like to talk about tonight. And you can see on the presentation behind me that we initially started the year with two goals, and one of them was really just focused on general belonging, because that's a real core piece of, of what we do and how we engage with the EDC. And then the other piece was really doing a close examination of all the systems we have at play, and how to support equity, you know, with all the stakeholders in our community. And so, we were really excited about that work, our school-based EDC really kind of maybe got down a few rabbit holes here and there about, you know, our systems and, and what we'd like to, you know, take advantage of, where we'd like to do some more work. And we thought, before we got started with that, with the Street Data piece that was introduced this year, we'd take some initial Street Data as an EDC team, just to maybe prioritize our efforts. And as we did that, what we found was that a lot of the stakeholders in our Morley community didn't necessarily feel as though they belonged in the community and in the work as much as we thought we did. And that was a really important realization, because I think that it'd be very difficult for folks to analyze and engage in systems-level work if they don't feel that core sense of belonging with where they are. So, we took a step back, and we decided to really focus on engaging all of our stakeholders and, and really prioritizing our students and our teachers in that sense of belonging at Morley this year. So, one of the ways that we did that was we tried to show folks how equity work is embedded in the things we do every day. I think a big challenge, and, and one of the reasons why people feel like they don't always belong as a champion of equity work, is because it's still seen as a separate thing, another, another item on the list. And so, my EDC rep partner here, Mr. Jason Buhler, is featured in this slide, and the point that he made through our EDC work with our school community was that there are opportunities to promote equity work every single day, like, for example, a Read Aloud. Read Aloud is something that happens in countless elementary classrooms every single day, and Jason pointed out that there's an opportunity to build student relationships there, and if you're purposeful about the content and the books that you're choosing, there's also an opportunity for students to see and feel themselves in that content, which is hopefully opening a door and creating accessibility. So, those are things that are happening all the time, and that was a great point for, for us to explore as a staff, because I think it helped people see that equity work is not separate work, it's embedded in the things that we do every single day. You know, as is our work, you know, with that district EDC team on top of our school-based team, and our district EDC team has been really, really helpful this year, because it gave us the opportunity, and so when I say us, I mean it gave our school-based team the opportunity to have a dedicated time to sit down and really dig in and think about the Street Data that we're pulling and how it's going to impact our work. And the really nice thing was that it wasn't an isolated piece that Jason and I looked at after school one day in my office, it was in the company of all of our EDC colleagues at the district level, so we had the opportunity to bounce off ideas off of other schools, hear what people were doing, and that helped make that time really purposeful. You know, looking forward, we also wanted to think about, you know, what challenges lay ahead, you know, what can we anticipate as a, as a bridge we need to cross, and, I mean, who doesn't recognize time as a challenge? And, and I certainly want to acknowledge that just time itself is something we always want more of, any one of us could have used two or three more hours than today, I'm sure, so I want to acknowledge that, because it's validating for folks. But, you know, looking at it more deeply, we recognize that time is a challenge in terms of this equity work requiring not just research, but research with reflection and sensitivity, to make sure that we're really being open and inclusive with the work that we're doing. And the last piece about time that we talked about this year, I really want to anticipate, isn't so much a how we're spending a time consideration, but that question of when. And I'm super purposeful about that, because it demonstrates the commitment of EDC work. And the example I always like to give people is in the beginning of the year, when we're goal-setting, when we're setting the tone, creating excitement, everybody believes that our space is equitable and open and inclusive for everybody, and then, because we are in the business of developing human beings, conflict naturally arises over the course of the year. You can't avoid that, it's inevitable. So, then the question becomes, do we still believe we are as inclusive and welcoming and creating that sense of belonging in those moments of conflict as we are when everything is optimistic, you know, at the beginning of the year? And that's a difficult question to answer, and it's certainly a focus of ours moving forward. So, you know, moving forward, going into next year, we really, really want to think about some of the systems you see there on the left, and those came out of some student and staff focus groups that we did this year, and based on the responses we got from people in those settings, we really started to think about, well, all right, so these new pieces we started this year, these fairness focuses, these equity pieces at each of our staff meetings, what are those going to look like moving forward? And what is our cheer committee doing, and how are we casting a wider net for some of our community events that we do at Morley? And within each of those things, we really want to make sure that student voice is present, even at the elementary level. Doing those student focus groups, from kindergartners up to, to fifth graders, you know, from five to 11, they'll tell you lots of cool stuff, and some of it is just fun, but some of it hits you right here. And we really want to make sure that we're using those responses to not only guide our work, but inviting the people who gave those responses to be part of the work with us, and that's something we're really committed to as we, you know, move into next year, and we're really excited to have the support of our district EDC Committee, and hopefully there'll be a lot more development that happens. And I want to end just really quickly, Jason Buhler, who was featured in that video, this is a quote that he wrote for one of our staff meetings, and it just speaks to the level of learning that happens through EDC work and the level of impact, because when we engage with community members in this way, we're learning as much ourselves as we're trying to teach them, and that makes an impact, and it's something that, that stays with you moving forward. So, we're really, really happy and proud of our work and looking forward to continuing it next year. I believe I'd like to pass things off to my Sedgwick colleagues at this point.
Good evening, my name is Katie Seymour, and I am an ELA teacher and team leader at Sedgwick Middle School.
Hello, my name is Lisa Helvey, and I'm a speech-language pathologist at Sedgwick Middle School, and we've both been members of EDC since we've joined the district here, and we are proud to be representing our school tonight.
The restructuring of our EDC has allowed us to truly become teacher leaders at Sedgwick Middle School. We've been able to collaborate with our administrators to make change in our building. We've developed a problem of practice with our principal, Ms. Karen Cookish, as it is aligned with our strategic development plan. We decided to start with academic interventions to encourage differentiation from an equity lens and strengthen our tier-one instructional strategies to meet the needs of all of our learners.
Additionally, the full-day learning opportunities that we've had this year as part of the EDC have allowed us to collaborate with peers around the district, essentially creating a think tank of equity work.
Right. Oh, this is you, just kidding.
I get to keep going, sorry.
We made a script for you, we were very excited.
We planned a teacher's teaching teacher's PD to highlight the expertise of our educators within the building. We recruited teacher leaders to present equity-focused instructional strategies at 11 rotating stations. We distributed faculty into random groupings, so if you can picture the middle-school model of teams, we broke them all apart, and to encourage collaboration across disciplines, leading to deeper conversations about how to apply strategies in order to promote equitable outcomes throughout our school.
You could hit the next one, thank you. All right, so after our PD session, we received valuable and energizing feedback from both participants and presenters. Honestly, it was shocking. It is very hard to make teachers happy after a professional learning experience, we are very harsh critics, and they were so excited. They described the learning as high-leverage strategies fostering student ownership, and reflected that the learning from other teachers is highly valuable. One teacher even reflected that this was the jumpstart I needed. The presenters also shared positive feedback, feeling empowered by the experience and excited about the practicality of the classroom-ready strategies. Many of the presenters shared they would love to do this again, but as participants next time.
Since the feedback was so well-received, we continued with peer-led PD snapshots during our faculty meetings. The, this routine regularly embeds equity learning opportunities in our monthly staff meetings, maintaining our focus on best instructional practices. Next year, we will expand our work by furthering our restorative practices, introducing instructional rounds aligned with the social justice pedagogy from our reading Street Data, and continuing to strengthen our tier-one instructional strategies that are differentiated to empower all learners.
And we really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight as the EDC Building Representatives. We're very proud of the meaningful equity work that we've been doing over the past few years at Sedgwick, and we love being there, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Tossing it over to you, Ben.
All right, thanks, everybody. I'm Ben Norland, science teacher from Hall High School. And first, I want to thank Sarah for, her, you know, leadership and, and guidance shaping our problem of practice, establishing it, and recognizing the importance of, and, of a sense of belonging at school, and for sort of setting the stage for our work in the year. And so, yeah, go to the next one. So, you know, broadly this year, we decided that it was about understanding where we're at as a community, for the purpose of informing, you know, good strategic choices, sort of moving forward, so that, you know, began with designing a series of focus groups, and so that included, Sarah met with families early on, and, and doing a kind of a parent focus group session, and then that led into a number of student focus groups that were carried out by a team of, of really great colleagues at school. And then, in one of our professional learning opportunities, we did a data collection session with staff as well, focused around the Street Data framework for agency, looking at identity, belonging, efficacy, and mastery, as sort of elements of building this positive school community that we want. And so, we gathered a lot of qualitative data and to process, and really what we found is that, you know, coming from the students, they, you know, want the leadership to not just hear, but act on their voice and input, and create more opportunities to share that voice, but also to have it be meaningful. They also want their peers to speak out more and set a good example, and so they recognize, you know, their responsibility as much as ours in sort of shaping that. And, you know, for staff, there's, it was very clear that relationships matter a lot, and that their professional relationships are an important part of feeling like they belong in the staff and can, and do their best. The collaborative time that we're able to get is really important for our sense of mastery and efficacy in being effective educators. New learning is really important. New learning is really important to the staff. And we need, need and want to continue to have opportunities to expand our learning. But, the challenges are real. And integrating multiple modes of, and of new learning is really, really hard. And the volume and pressure of the job is increasing. And that was very evident in the conversations and feedback that we gathered. And it was interesting for the staff, talking about identity was very difficult. And in a lot of the responses, we noticed staff defaulting to centering students over themselves, which I think is a testament to our staff, but also to the challenge that we have of seeing ourselves in this deeply meaningful work. And, so I think there's a lot to process and to think about and to set direction for, you know, moving forward and developing a sustainability plan for effective information gathering that we can then act on with the limited resources and time that we have. And thinking forward about a sustainability plan that integrates, you know, our traditional school climate surveys with some deeper work, building connections in the moment, but also to inform our decision-making long-term. Did I miss anything? I think I got it. Oh, and yeah. And we welcome any questions as we go. That's my first time.
Okay, I'm so, you did forget something, you forgot Shannon.
It's a lot to include everything on the slide.
I just had an extra handout too, thank you. So, one of the things at Akin that we talk about all the time is that relationships are the foundation of everything that we do. And having that sense of belonging, we talk about a lot, being a welcoming school. We always look through the ends, the lens of equity in whatever we do. But, what we really delved into this year with the work through the EDC and looking at the street data was really, how can we get information to really quantify what that looks like? And to also make sure that we're really, students aren't fooling, falling through the cracks and that we're not missing anyone. So our problem of practice was to identify students who may feel less connected, and then how we can improve our own practices to help all students feel that sense of belonging. So where we started was, I just put out a question to all staff. I said, without overthinking it, who are those students that come to mind in your classroom interactions, special areas, recess, lunch, that you feel may not feel that sense of belonging? Send me their names. So I took all of that information, and there were 54 different student names that were identified at least once. But, there were 16 students that were identified by at least three staff members. So I really felt that that was significant if of all the students in our school, those 16 were being identified in more than one area. So then what we did at a staff meeting, we put up pictures of who those students are. Because we all, you know, work together and own all of our students. And then on the next slide, what I did was I really looked at those numbers. So of those 16 students, 63% were male, 38% were female. So we talked about what that might mean. I also noticed 10 out of 16 of those students did not start at Akin in kindergarten. So we talked about, as we have more students moving into the district at different times, how much, how integral those foundational beginning years are when we're talking about a sense of belonging and feeling welcomed. And what do we need to do when we don't have the gift of time and six years with a student and family to help them feel that sense of connection? And then I also broke down the demographics of those 16 students compared to our school population as a whole. And in some cases, it's very aligned, and in some cases, it isn't. So we talked about why that might be the case and things that we can do differently. And then, once I did the data with the staff, it really made me think about, okay, well, this is who the staff is identifying, but how do some of our own perceptions, biases, looking at our own lens, how do the kids actually feel about their sense of belonging? So, sorry, backwards. So then I created a survey, and you can see on the first page that I handed out, the survey questions. And I surveyed all 202 of our students in grades three through five. I gave them the survey because I kind of wanted it to be on the same playing field given by the same person. And at the start of the discussion, I told them really what we want to talk about is the difference between feeling welcomed and feeling like you belong. And I think even in elementary school, we don't always give students enough credit for being able to really know and identify the difference. So we said, you know, what are examples of feeling welcomed? Someone says good morning, someone says hello to you in the hallway. But what does it mean to really feel like you belong? That's a deeper feeling, that feels different than just feeling welcomed. And what I have up here are some of the responses that the students put. And don't tell the staff, but they were better than some of the things the adults said. Students said, when someone asks me if I'm okay on my bad days, that makes me feel like I belong. Being acknowledged, feeling I can trust teachers, feeling accepted. Someone said, it feels like home. Some things that make me feel like I belong are when my friends understand me and know my boundaries. I thought that was very powerful. And then we had some, you know, that really, you know, hit you in the core. We had a student that said, nothing really makes me feel like I belong here, but I feel welcomed at least. So that's when we realized, you know, students know the difference and we had work to do. So based on those student surveys, then what we did was we correlated that information between what the students were identifying as their sense of belonging compared to what the staff thought. And it was some really good discussions, because there were certain students of those 16 that, based on their survey, weren't feeling the way that we thought they were. And we talked about who are students that may present as a loner, or we mentioned happy introverts, you know, that are feeling connected but may not show that in the way that we may be expecting them to. When we asked students to identify friends that they rely on, we talked about the difference between a trusted true friend and an acquaintance. And we realized it wasn't just the quantity of what they wrote, but the quality. So for example, if I wrote down 10 trusted friends, but none of those 10 friends wrote my name, then, you know, that was information that we had. Or I may have only put one friend, but if I put Ryan and he put me, then, you know, we have that sense of belonging. So that was also information that then we shared with our clinical team, the results of the survey and the results with the staff. And then, once we had done that, on the third slide was, we said, okay, now we have all of this information, we have these student names, what do we do about it? So those were some of the artifacts that I shared with you on that sheet. One of the things, our fantastic school counselor Laura Griggs developed the Akin Changemakers Group. And that's a group of fifth-grade students where their mission is to create that sense of belonging. And it says, "The group is made up of fifth-grade students who believe that all students at Akin, regardless of gender, race, culture, et cetera, our group listens to all students and strives to leave a lasting impact on our school." And some of the initiatives that that group has done this year, they have gone into the younger classrooms and they've read stories about belonging and inclusion and equity, and had discussions with some of our primary students around that. They've created, I have a picture here of table-talk conversation starters in the cafeteria, because we talked about when students are eating, to have questions that they can talk about, to help facilitate conversations, maybe talk to someone that they don't always communicate with at lunch. And you can see they were totally student-created questions. You know, my favorite, what did the left eye say to the right eye? Between us, something smells. So you could see, and I have to say, all the time at lunch. I see kids getting up, taking, you know, the ring of questions, sitting down at their table, going through the different questions together. And then on the back page, something else that we've done this year as a school-wide initiative, our mascot is Swoop the Owl. So we call it a swoop shuffle. And we've done two far, two rounds so far this year, and we have a third coming up in June. So every single staff member in the school, this is just a sample, comes up with just a fun activity that they want to do with a group of students. It could be something they're interested in, it could be an art project, it could be something outside, whatever they choose. And then we have a menu of options for the kindergarten and first graders to choose, the second and third grade, and the fourth and fifth grade. So the kids get their menu of what their options are, who the staff members are that are teaching it. And then, I put them into mixed across-grade-level groups. And for 45 minutes, they get to spend time with that staff member and kids that are not in their class, doing just a fun activity to help build that connection and belonging. And you can see from some of the pictures, just joy and fun and spending time together. So those are some of the things that we've done so far this year. And we'll definitely look to continue to build upon this this, next year. And the teachers are actually very invested, because they said, are you going to do that survey again at the end of the year? Because now we want to see the results. You know, we don't want any kids on that list at all. And, you know, I'm so appreciative, just the work of the EDC through the lens that we value and look at equity and the commitment that we have, you know, to really help all of our students to feel safe and seen and like they belong.
So needless to say, it's why I prefer you actually hear it in person instead of me trying to explain that. I would have never done any of this magnificent work justice by speaking about it myself. And so just to give you just some ideas about what's next for us, we are, we remain committed, we will continue our learning opportunities to expand our knowledge, to learn together, to challenge each other, to ask the hard questions. Because I think that it's really very, it's very easy to fall into the trap of like feeling like you've done something and you're done. And the reality is, is, you know, as Kathy said in the video, the, the challenges are evolving. The work evolves. We, even when you're feeling good about something, all it takes, I, I tell people all the time, we give these climate surveys, and everybody gets really excited because it comes out super positive. And I'm like, you gotta do a focus script. And it's, it's such a different experience to have young people in front of you who, which ironically, I've, I've done a lot of focus groups in the district, and it doesn't actually matter to me, to them, that I'm a stranger in essence. I'm an adult who wants to listen, and that's all they care about. I'm an adult who cares, who wants to listen, and they're happy to tell me all the good, the bad, and the ugly. Which is what we have to be attuned to listening to. It's great to hear the good. You know, it's, it's a little concerning when you start hearing some bad, and it's heartbreaking when you hear the ugly. But it is, it's the work that we've chosen to do. So we, we are responsible for listening to all of it, whether it be from our students, from our families, and then being responsive to that. So we will continue that work and we will continue to ask the hard questions. I think it was really telling when, when Ben mentioned that how, how the adults struggled with talking about identity and how that kind of takes a role in, in the role, in the work that we do. That's a very real thing. It's why when people, you know, want to jump into this idea of restorative practices and they want to just jump into circles and jump into this and do all this, and I'm like, no, freeze. There's a mindset that you need to have in order to be able to effectively do this. And it, there's a consistency of belief and values that we have to be really aligned with in order for this work to, to bear fruit and for us to genuinely say that we have lived up to our, our mission that we said that we want. It's aspirational. I think if anybody tells you that we're there, I'll just be frank and tell you that they're lying. So, the reality is, we're working, we're working towards it, we're always working towards. Close, we want to continue to have closer partnerships, our office, my team who's behind me back there. We, we recognize the, the problem of practices that schools have developed. They are like day-to-day questions and, and I do feel like sometimes, especially like our administrators feel a little bit more bashful about like, you know, bugging me, what they think is bugging me. I'm like, no, it's not bugging me, it's literally why I'm here. And so what we've decided to do is we've decided we're gonna, we, I've assigned us to each, to schools. So we actually have like a cohort of schools that we will support more directly and be involved in at a closer level to kind of help support some of that work, to help support with doing some of the focus groups. So that we can, we can be really in it with, with our schools, right? With our EDC members, with our principals, making sure that they feel supported, loved through, right, the process of change and growth. And we also, again, this, this idea about building a restorative culture, this group works hard. We have, one of the members who was in the video is in our full-day EDC group, but she, she's definitely takes part in the after-school and is, and is a force within it. So we are going to continue to actually keep our, our double-dose model that we have where we have our full day and we still offer the afternoons, because some people can't do during the day, but they're happy to come in the afternoon and, and do work. We will also be developing modules for the whole school year over the summer that will kind of help guide people through some of the mindset, mindset work that needs to be done to truly be able to kind of lean into this work, along with some of the actual discrete skills that you need to, to have, and kind of pairing those back and forth. So we're going to be doing that work this summer as well. So that is kind of what's up and next for us. You know, I can talk all day, but I'm sure, never mind. But I will bring it back to you for questions.
Alright, thank you collectively, thank you very much. Thank you teammates, questions, thoughts, comments regarding the information. Latoya?
Thank you for the reports, sounds wonderful, thank you for all your hard work. That granular work that you're doing at Akin, that you've done at Akin, girl. Like, that's a model. And it, as you were, like, I was just like, that's what it takes, like, that's the work. And so it, it made me think a lot about how we duplicate that in the older grade. Like, like, it's interesting, because I, like, hearing Ben say, like, it's hard to get the adults in high school to talk about their identities and like to go there. And it's interesting, because it's also hard to get high school students to do that. There is a culture shift that happens from elementary to middle and high school. And, and there's a difference in how we're talking about belonging in SEL too, that shift. So it's just, it's something I'm pondering, because I'm like, the conversation is changing, and then like, we're almost regressing, like the, the students and teachers, right? Like, we just get less vulnerable. So it's just, I, I was thinking a lot about what you said, and I'm just thinking a lot about it in, in terms of our upper grades, like, what is that, like, what does that look like, you know, at that level? And like, it's not like Kitty to like do those same things in, in those spaces. So I'm just thinking about that, because that's, that's awesome. And then I, my question for y'all is, like, what does parent involvement look like? What do you, like, what do you need from parents and families to help further the work that you're doing at schools? We want to hear it.
I would say, like, one of the most important things that I really need for, for not just parents, but community as well, is that to remember that we are all in this together, right? The good, the bad, like, we're all in this together in that the conversations that we have at school, the brave conversations that you want us to have at school, you need to be brave enough to also have them at home. There's a level of comfortability that we can, we can develop in a, in a level of family, right? Feeling that we can develop in our classrooms and certainly in our schools. But you're literally family, right? They're literally taking their, some of their mold of, of their belief systems and what they, what they think they should be able to expect from the world, from you. And so, we, we recognize that this, that the fact that maybe this might not be happening as much as we like, is, is not in likelihood a not want to, but a not knowing how to. And so like my office is prepared, as we launch into next year and late summer, to, to kind of offer some opportunities for families to be able to come in and let's, let's, let's talk and let's learn about how you have those conversations at home. Because it's not, I mean, I'll be honest, you know, for some of the, you know, I'm a black woman, we've had, we had lots of conversations in my house about some elements of the work that is part of DEI work, right? But many of the other pieces we didn't talk about, right? Like, I don't think, I don't think there was ever a point in time that we had a conversation about disabilities in my house. Like, I had the general, like, golden rule that was kind of applied over everything. But actually specifically talking about that wasn't something that we ever really talked about. Talking about different religions, we didn't really talk about that as a family and, and the acceptance of those different things. The bottom line was just, everybody was supposed to be accepted. And, but I do think that it's important that we, we have conversations with families and we help families. And so instead of judging families, it's not a judgment, it's, it's, it's an invitation, right? An invitation to learn, an invitation to lean into this, an invitation to kind of gather in fellowship with other people who are also in that same spot wanting to know, hey, how do I bring this up at home, or like, what's a good way? And I always tell people, you'd be shocked, there's probably a children's book, like, you know, elementary-level book that covers everything. Because you can, you can make lessons and have, and like leapfrog into the deepest conversations from, from literature that from, for, intended for really young children. It's always a safe inroad, right? There's all these morals to the stories where you can kind of say, hey, so what are you? There's all these morals to the stories where you can kind of say, hey, so what are you, so what are you thinking about that, right? And it's, it's, you know, practice, practice makes better, not perfect, right? But practice makes better. And I think that we, we don't practice that, we don't practice asking for help. And I think as, as a district, we, you know, we just have to focus on our efforts on just really making sure that we offer that support and that help and that we're, you know, we're not here to judge, we're here to help, we're here to make things better for all of us. But what I would ask is that people lean into this idea that we, it is a community effort, we all need to be doing our part. We have so many amazing community partners in this community who can all be offering, they all have these like niche areas of expertise. You could all be voluntarily offering these, you know, these classes to talk about your area in specific, right? Like, and then we all just come and join yours, right? I think there's so many, there's so much opportunity here and I would just encourage people to just lean into that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you all for your work and putting yourselves on the front lines of this work and being so courageous and, and putting in that extra time for our students and families. We appreciate you.
Claire.
Thank you so much for the report and for, for explaining it from such a fundamental level. I also like that when you start the work, if you find out the data and the feedback from kids isn't in alignment of the path you were starting on, that you can adjust to it. Because shine time matters. It matters for adults, it matters for kids. And, you know, your voice mattering, your opinion mattering, people listening to you makes such a difference. And I really think it's fundamental to address the attendance problems that we see. If you know that you're missed when you're not there, if you know that you're, you've got a, a real important part of this project, you know, a variety of clubs, we're not all into sports, we're not, you know, talented in music and art, but there's clubs, there's great clubs and a place where you can find your people. And so with these opportunities to find your people, to find that place, to, to, and not all kids have that ability, they don't know. And sometimes parents aren't the best example of how to be extroverted or finding people because sometimes families are, don't go reach out much beyond their doors, you know? They're so busy. So I appreciate all the time you're giving, the, the listening to kids, sharing stories where you can talk about how you feel. All of that's really important. Thank you.
Gail.
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to really commend what you did at Aiken. I thought that was really outstanding and like almost, you could almost publish that data. I was actually surprised when you stratified that by the race of the children. I, was not what I would have expected. And so I had actually two questions. One is, I would find it like, I think it would be useful and I, I don't know if your plan is to now, after you've tried to make some of those changes, to go back and re-survey and, because you did mention that, but I don't know if that's the plan, to see if any of what you did obviously had any impact. And then my second question was to you, Teresa, if what was done at Aiken can be done more across the district, looking at some of these, you know, issues and then doing that kind of essentially research to see what we, what we're doing that's right and what we're doing that isn't right. But I would also want to know if, if you plan to research.
Yep. We have a plan to do this survey again the first week in June, especially as we're changing leadership. I think it's extra important. I want to put a close on what we've done for this year and then also really use that information to help as a springboard going forward to next year. Because also, you know, when you're looking at students and how they're feeling, I also want to see what may potentially have been a moment in time and what may potentially be, you know, a longer-standing feeling. And on the other side, were there students that had a more positive response on the first survey but aren't feeling as good going into next year? So yes, we'll be doing that again.
So it was really important for, I think for our, for all our collective growth, that people got to, to choose a problem of practice that resonated with their building and they got to kind of dive into it in, in their way and then to, and then to share. So like our last day of our EDC, I wish I had it on tape. It was magical. Because every single school got up and shared and the ideas like popping off and like in, in how we've seen ideas, you know, that were done in one school to be transplanted into other schools, like, that's what you want. Because the reality of this work is you have to have a why for doing it, right? Like, so I could, in all sincerity, be like, okay, listen, everyone, you're all doing this, you don't have a choice, et cetera, et cetera. The moment you turn it into that, you have, you have taken the, the spark of a problem of practice that was of real interest to people and that where they have self, self-motivation to want to see it through. And so the, the best model, in all sincerity, is to allow people's ideas to spark off of each other's because as they're all hearing them, they're, they're adding. Like, if you see, like, I, already I'm starting to see what people are drafting for next year for their problem of practices, they're picking out like the best things because they had 16 different models to choose from. And so they're, they're naturally doing that and because they're owning the process of doing that, they're going to do it and they're going to go all in. And so part of the splitting up of our team is to help make sure that we kind of guide that practice and also ask the tough questions. Like, so if I feel like someone's problem of practice isn't hitting like a level that I, that is, that we think is where everybody can see themselves in it, it's, it becomes our responsibility to ask those questions and to, and to push them further and deeper. So I, I mean, I've told, trust me, I totally get where you're going with that, but it's also really important for, for adult learners and for adults that you're, that you're trying to shift practice, that they feel really invested in what they've, that they're doing. And trust me, seeing other people approach it in different ways has, has already transplanted those ideas along the path. So I'm, I'll be excited to show next year when we, we get to around this time so that you can kind of see like how, how, how deep people choose to go and how deep people are going to be helped to go in their practices. But yeah, I, I wish that you could have, that, that could have been like taped and memorialized because it was just phenomenal to see all the different ways. Like, I have like a sampling of schools, there are 16, and, and every school did a problem of practice. It was, and it was just a beautiful experience, I think, for all of us, if I could speak for the whole team. But, thanks.
Other questions or comments? Jason.
So thank you not only for the very, very important work that, that goes behind this, but really for this presentation. And, and I think this presentation is so important because unfortunately, right now, we're, we're in a moment where diversity and equity and inclusion, those words are strawmen, right? They're boogeymen. And I think if you know what they're really about, just as you have shown us tonight, for us, it's about every day, every child belonging, right? And what that means is students who feel like they belong perform better. They don't get lost in the system, schools are safer. I, I mean, that's the message. And, and so just thank you so much.
All right. Other questions or comments? I echo all that has been shared. Thank you very much for the information and it was really insightful to hear the perspectives from each school and, and what was learned and what was learned to do differently. I appreciated you sharing how you all pivoted and, and striving to do something that was meaningful in that moment. And that just shows the authenticity of the work that's being done. So thank you, thank you. I do, I do have a brief question. And, and if, and maybe this is one too, that would allow for insight and maybe qualitative and an opportunity for quantitative pieces. But I was struck when you mentioned how, in terms of the teachers that were leading some of the work, that they would love to do it again, but as participants the next time.
Of course. So we had a station rotation and we actually, with Karen, selected some teachers who we know are modeling high-quality instructional practices and engaging all learners in a variety of ways. For example, we have some teachers who are crafting like social justice podcasts and like engaging students and creating their own content and like questions and inquiry. And so we like pulled really awesome instructional strategies, some learning target reflections, different, you know, unique strategies that would make sure that we're engaging all learners in a meaningful way. And we chose them from a variety of disciplines as well, which was really great. We had special education teachers, arts teachers, regular ed teachers. And so they led each of those stations. We set a timer for 15 minutes. Anne McKernan actually was able to come too, it was awesome. And they got a chance with their unique group to listen to the teacher, but also collaborate and share their insights and kind of partner and say, oh, I did this similarly, or I tried this, oh, I'd love to try this. And at the end, it was just a really awesome opportunity for the participants, but the people who are leading the PD would love to be, being participants next time.
So having the, the peer-led PD snapshots and staff meetings was one of our ways we responded to that feedback. So the teachers who led the PD could have some PD coming back to them in the following months. So they could get a little like taste of what was offered, but that's something we definitely want to keep in mind so that they're not always providing the PD, but they can also have opportunities to be learners themselves. Because all of our staff have those ways of providing their insights into their classroom in those instructional practices.
And also this work was developed after last year, we did focus groups on belonging with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And it was really insightful. We found that a lot of them were complaining about the instructional practices and wanting to be more engaged in the classroom. And that's kind of what led us to that academic focus this year. And so we're excited for that work and our teachers are really feeling invigorated and like applying this work in their PLCs. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And I'm really proud of those teachers for being open and saying, hey, we would like to have some of the learning as well. And that is so very important. I'm thinking, Latoya, what you were speaking about in terms of being vulnerable and how can we encourage our young people to be vulnerable if we adults are not allowing ourselves to do so? So thank you for allowing the opportunity. Thank you all for all that you're doing and let's continue to move forward. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. And as we transition, we now will move on to routine matters where we have the financial report. And with that, seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the financial report for the period ending March 31st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. Discussion. So Ethan, I believe you are reporting out this time.
Yeah, I do. Let me start.
All right.
Report is for the end of March for fiscal year '25. So since the year end is June, that's three-quarters of the year has been captured. At this point, the fiscal year is projected to end with a positive $700,000 overall variance in the general fund, which is the primary fund for the schools. This compares to an end of February report, which had a positive variance of $50,000 for the year. The general fund budget in the current fiscal year is, the budget is $200 million, 200 million, 800,000. And that goes against the current projection with the new updated budget report or variance report of 200.1. So it's a positive variance of 700,000 against the budget. There's four major categories of the general fund. The largest category, salaries, accounts for almost 65% of the general fund categories. And it had changes in the individual line items, but overall, the category was the same as the prior last meeting, which was 300,000 to the positive side. Second category, benefits, which accounts for 18% of the budget, also had no change from the April meeting in terms of year-end projections. However, in the third category of the general fund, purchase services, there was a significant change in the expense line items. The line item of out-of-district tuition, there was a positive net $650,000 variance, which is a combination of a positive $1 million coming from the legislation or the money from the state of Connecticut that had just been passed by legislature for West Hartford and other towns. And this was offset against 350,000 of funds that we had taken out of the educational service reimbursement funds to help cover the prior deficit. So the net is a 650,000 for the, in terms of looking forward. And while this is incremental money coming from the state, it should be pointed out, the particular expense has grown significantly over the last year, several years, and the $1 million is to a certain extent catch-up of band-aided costs dictated by the state. In summary, the general fund with a budget of 200.8 million is projected at the end of March to have an overall positive 700,000, positive variance in total. That's it on the general fund unless there's any questions. In terms of the grants, state and federal, district had 6.2 million of federal and state grants that are expected to be expensed in the current fiscal year and 587,000 that is for future years. And then in terms of the special general, the special fund, sorry, the, which there are 10 different funds with an overall balance of 1.7 million. The only real change was a $350,000 transfer that had previously been mentioned that went back into the educational services reimbursement fund. And then the final set of funds is the nutrition service funds. At the end of March, there was a fund balance of 3.5 million, which was approximately 400,000 higher than the March '24 balance. And it's anticipated that the money in those funds will be used in the future for dining setup of the Hall High School and for the redesign of the Clonard High School. And that's all I had unless I need to be corrected.
No, you were right on. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have or provide any more details that you might need, particularly as it relates to excess cost or anything that has, has changed materially that you'd like more information on.
All right. Well, Ethan, thank you for the report out. And yes, we have Ms. Liz Hewitt here. I'm trying not to get nostalgic, but I'll, but nonetheless, teammates, any questions or comments regarding the financial report that we have received?
So I'm going to guess we haven't often had 700,000 surplus.
That is correct.
Can you just, for the, you know, assuming anyone's still up and listening, but for posterity's sake, I suppose, can you just explain how we got to that figure? Because certainly it wasn't there on April 1st when we had to approve the budget.
It was not. Thank you for mentioning that. So excess cost has been quite a story this year. You've heard Paul talk about it many times. It was a key factor when we adopted our budget. The initial projection that we had received from the state, based upon our December, our October 1st filing of our excess cost, we were informed we were going to get approximately 6.1 million or 62% of what we had filed for, for our excess cost with the state. Certainly that put us in a deficit position. Subsequent to that, the state appropriated another $40 million, of which we were to receive approximately 1.4 million, which got us to the point where we could balance for the year and, and we were in good shape. Subsequent to that, we did our March 1st filing. Our filing for excess cost is done three times a year, the preliminary October 1st, the filing in March when we have more information about our students who qualify and what we anticipate the actual cost being. And then we do a final filing at the end of the year. We did the March 1st filing and the state published updated estimates in April, subsequent to when we adopted the budget. What we found at that time is that our portion of the excess cost reimbursement went up $825,000. So the total appropriation stayed the same, but our percentage of that total pot went up significantly. With the initial filing, we were at around 3.3, 3.4% of the total. And with the secondary filing, we were at 3.9%. That also had the impact of increasing our additional appropriation that the state had done, the additional 40 million. So in total, we came in 1 million higher than what we had been estimating. As Ethan explained, 650,000 of that will affect our general fund and will be a surplus for us. The other 350, we had planned to use our education services reimbursement to help offset the projected shortfall and we will not need to do that anymore. Paul had mentioned at the last meeting, when we adopted the revised budget based upon the numbers that the town council adopted, our plan at this point would be to take that 700,000 and to put that into a non-lapsing education account. 700,000 and to put that into a non-lapsing education account. Because at this point, we really don't know what's going to happen to this funding at a state level for the upcoming year. The state session ends, I believe, on June 3rd or 4th, which is too late for us to, to make any changes to our budget. The town has committed that they will match us 700,000 for a total of 1.4 million should there be a shortfall in funding for the upcoming year. That might have been a little more information than you wanted, the long-winded approach.
So a fortuitous confluence of some good events.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Claire and then Ethan.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm curious, the, in the grant funding, the 512,000 that we have in that fund, is that money actually in the town of West Hartford? Is it in a bank account or is it still being held by the state and then you request it and the state gives it?
It is still held by the state at this point. We do all of our grant drawdowns on a monthly basis and we do them in arrears, meaning that we spend the, spend the funds first and then draw down whatever we have spent each month. But they are committed to us, we've received these grant awards, and it's really just a matter of timing as to when we'll receive them.
Ethan.
So just one critical add that I understand from, to what Jason was saying. The important change that happened this year recently, as opposed to prior years, is the 700,000 can actually be used for future years. Because my understanding that before that money would have gone back to the town.
Correct. So the state actually modified its legislation regarding the unexpended education account. And so prior, it had to be established and authorized by the town council and they made a change in May of 2024, which gave local boards of education the ability to establish and then deposit funds into that account. In both cases, they could only be used for education purposes, it just allows you as a board to make that decision.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Shannon.
I just had a question about the contracted services and the increase there. I just, I was curious if there's a threshold at which contracted, you know, I'm, in my day job, I'm a contractor for a lot of school districts and we have to go in front of the board to justify the services and get approval from the board for the contract of work. Is there a threshold at which that would happen in West Hartford? Because I don't think we've ever seen something come before us for contracted services.
So in our case, you know, we differentiate between professional services, which are services that might be done for special education students or other professionals of that sort, whereas contracted services are typically services done for our facilities that we do not have the expertise to do ourselves. So for example, you know, we have all the elevators in the school inspected each month. We bring contractors in for other services. At this point in time, we do have a vacancy in our maintenance division and so we are bringing in more, more contracted services to cover that. So it's not something that we would have to come back to you for, they're just contracted services in the normal operation of business.
But even for professional services, is there a threshold at which the provider would present their, like their case for why we would need that work from an external source?
No. When we, our purchasing requirements say that if we are going to have, you know, bring in a professional services provider for more than a certain amount, that you have to kind of go through a process to vet them, but not that they would have to come before the board.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Hewitt, may I ask, and Mr. Visinas, is this the last report that you will?
We're going to do one more next month.
Oh, good. Okay, all right. So I will hold off then.
She does not get off the hook.
No, right till the end, right to the bitter end. I believe I'll be the last agenda item on the last meeting of the year.
Oh, all right, all right. So I.
Oh, well, thanks.
So with that, any other questions or comments regarding our financial report? All right. With the motion on the floor, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose, any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now moving on to approval of the minutes, seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of May the 6th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Latoya. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. Discussion or suggested edits? Seeing none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain?
One, aye, or yeah, abstain.
One abstention. All right. Thank you. Moving on to information and reports, board members, do we have any communications and reports from other boards or organizations?
May I offer an alibi?
Okay.
From my report, this seemed like the most appropriate time. I meant to mention for the listening public, if they're still up, that the last day of school will be on June 13th, which is a Friday, and that as per our usual, we will have an early release schedule, similar to what we do on Wednesdays on that day.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Any other updates? All right. Other information discussions? All right. Moving on to future business, announcement of future meeting dates, or date, that is. Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, regular Board of Education meeting, 7 o'clock here in room 314. Do we have a request for a future agenda item? Seeing none, do we have any visitors who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we do not have an executive session, therefore seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. Meeting adjourned.